Call this meeting to order for the Board of Trustees of the Town of Beano Vista. Can I have roll call, please? Thank you all. Will you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I remind everyone to please silence or turn off your cell phone. First item is the agenda adoption. Are there any issues, deletion? During that, I entertain a motion. Second Swisher, further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The agenda is adopted. Next is the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Just want to point out, reappointment of the Tree Advisory Board Group, Catherine Hunt, Mike Gertsen, at the hairline. Sure, that's not how you say it, but I'll say it that way.
Resolution five, that's just about give Philip the power to finish everything with the building, right, for the police station?
Yep.
Cool.
Correct. We're closing on January 31st.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Second phase. Further discussion? Can I have roll call, please, Paul? Thank you all very much. It's a good thing happening, very good thing happening. The next item is public comment. I remind everyone, if you wish to make, when you're in the Zoom, you can raise your hand in the chat box. If you are on your phone, you can press star nine and we will recognize you to speak. I don't see anything. Philip, do you? Okay, I've closed this portion of the meeting. Public comment. Next is staff reports. Administrator.
Always catches me off guard. I should.
I can start with somebody else.
Me? All right, page fifty-three of your packet is my report. And we're rolling right along for 2022, so I just wanted to call your attention to some of the upcoming dates. Nothing significant has changed really there. Just, but just a reminder, we will be meeting with San Fernando Cristo on February 1st to take a, take a look as a collective at the France Draft Franchise Agreement update, and we have the water work session coming up on February 8th, and we'll be starting at 5:30 for that. Paula will be helping me collect some food orders from you all for that evening so that we, we can get through that evening and be grumpy because we're all hungry. So looking forward to that and then starting to kind of look forward towards the end of first quarter and the second quarter. So if you have any questions about any of the upcoming work sessions and key days, please let me know. Looking at some, some recent recent news, I did, I am getting questions from the City of Salida whether the town of BV would like to have a representative from Chaffee County participate on the COG, the Upper Arkansas Council of Governments. That's, that's something that historically the City of Salida has had a representative on that board and then typically a county commissioner participates on that as well. I've sent you all a couple of emails about that. So I have not heard back on that and we can follow up with trustee staff later on, but I need to, I need to respond back if there's interest in participating on that or not, so.
How often do they meet, Philip?
I believe it's monthly. Believe it's monthly unless they cancel.
Same be every month.
Typically, yes.
And where is that? That's from like Canyon City up to Leadville?
I think they've tried, yeah.
That like numbers?
Yeah, it is. They try to move that meeting around, I think. But typically there's some travel involved when it's in person, which now I think is a bit in flux.
But there again, there's the website here. A person could go on and see what's really going on there, so. How soon?
On that, would you?
Um, I'd like to respond pretty soon. Yeah.
Into the week if possible?
Yeah, that'd be great. So take a look at it. We just, as a plug to them, we do get small mini grants through their organization. It's an extension of DOLA grants, but we've, we've utilized that for trash cans in our park and some of the weight finding signage, things like that. So it's a good partnership and a good group to be tied in with. Thank you all that attended the, the school board work session a couple of weeks ago. We've already started corresponding specifically about some of the takeaways from that meeting and we'll be meeting this, gosh, is that this week already? The 27th with, with Lisa and a couple of their board members to talk on some of the follow-up items, really looking at the childcare function of the Carbon Street project. They want to continue to talk about land and they seem to have a very keen interest in our property that's next to Avery Parsons that right now the town does not have a specific plan for. So we'll just kind of be hearing what their thoughts are around that. And then we are still trying to wrap up the school land dedication and fee and lieu IGA update, which again is something that we apply to residential development as a means to either get land for future school sites or fee and lieu to help the school save up money for acquiring land for future, future school sites. So that meeting is this week at 2:00 PM on the 27th. If, if there's a trustee or two that are interested in participating, you're more than welcome to join us since they do have two of their board members participating. I just want to that up to you all. So let me know on that one, too. Waste diversion, that's, that's a topic that we've, we've handed off to Garnet to take a leadership role for the county on, and they've been providing updates to the county commissioners. We are looking at early April to bring specific updates to you all and actually countywide. So more information to come about that, but I think it'll be a work session at a county commissioner meeting that everybody will be invited to, so. Be looking forward to that. I highlighted a few key project updates. I think, again, working on franchise agreements. The rodeo grounds master plan is, is proceeding nicely. There was a public meeting as planned. It, we had to convert it to a virtual meeting. We were going to have it in person here at the community center, but we went virtual with it and it actually turned out great. We had two sessions back to back to allow people to participate at a time that worked best for them and had about thirty-five to forty participants in the first session, including a few trustees and one or two planning and zoning commissioners, and then a session at 7:00 PM and they had about twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three people on that. So pretty well attended and then additional survey data collected from, from that as well. So good comments. I do want to remind everybody that this is a, this is a long-term master plan that we're working on. It is not a wish list that the town's going to get after over the next two, three, four years. There's a lot of ideas going into this, which is great, but it's going to be a very long-term, long-term plan for us, so. Police station project is continuing to move forward and again, we're marching forward towards this key date of March, March 1st for the DOLA grant application. So a lot of work is going in to that. I want to thank specifically Joseph and our police department for really making sure that we're, we're pushing forward with what we need to. We do have a contract in place where we've brought on a construction manager for pre, pre-construction services, which is very exciting. This is going to help us get accurate pricing towards the, for the DOLA grant and also start helping us with value engineering because we know that we're going to have to have some options to stay within budget for the whole project. So it's, it's not a contract that binds us for the actual construction. That will be a much larger contract that you all will see before we proceed with that, but it's great to have an experienced con, construction manager on, on the team now. Arizona Trail and Bridge, we are inching closer, believe it or not. We are actually getting approvals from CDOT and the engineer did complete the scour, now scout, scour report and CDOT has approved that. So we are actually hoping to see this thing go out for advertisement. Maybe in February, but realistically in, in March, so. Great, great to see that. Water rate study is this other major component that's going on. As a reminder, this is something that we're, we're hoping to have some information for you all in line with the work sessions coming up on the 8th. It's not going to be the primary focus for the February 8th meeting, but it's, it, it will be good information to have in our, in our minds kind of knowing the impact of projects and acquiring more water and the cost of doing so and how we would pay for doing that. That is coming along and I think that's about it for my report. I will pause for any questions.
Question for Philip. Very busy beginning of the year. I'll put it that way.
Lot going on.
Lot going on. Plenty of opportunity to get involved if one wishes to. Lot to do. Some good discussions coming up that we've been waiting for, actually. You name it. Now I just, I just, now I know why Joel came back and is working for the town so that he can see the Arizona project. Anything else for Philip? Thank you, Philip. Michelle, Town Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. My report is on, what page is that? On fifty-five, fifty-seven of your packet and I have, oh yes, the audit. We had a couple responses to the audit RFP and we have selected an auditor. Libby was awesome helping me review the RFPs and we agreed on Hinkle and Company. Out of, I believe it's Colorado Springs, but they have several, several locations. We feel the offer was a very professional product and price, and we feel like that was the most bang for our buck and also a very good deal. Okay, so November sales tax came in and it was at 538,000. So we are doing really well still. I have attached the bar graph after my report. And then as Philip scrolls down, this is, is the top one is the local sales tax. And the one is kind of split, but that's the remote sales tax and it's still growing. So yeah. Very interesting. And then I have town expenditures in excess of $2,000 and the check run and payroll figures and all of that. So I'm willing to take questions at this time.
Question for Michelle.
I have a question.
Yes.
It said the sales tax is 538,000. But in that first little chart, it's three fifty, three hundred and fifty-one. And then on the graph that is down below is 351 also. So I'm wondering if the 538 is, I don't know what it is. Seems too high.
It includes.
Oh, it looks like that's September.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry. You're right. It is 351,000 and for November, that's still a very good number. As I have mentioned previously, and I apologize for the error, but I pull, I dust off some of the old reports, so I don't have to reinvent the wheel. And I had to reach back to September to get the, the graphs on this, on the remote and local data. So for this format, I had to reach back into September, so I apologize. But our eagle-eyed trustee is awesome and she keeps me honest.
That's good. Go ahead, somebody does.
Somebody needs to probably.
No problem.
Thank you. Anything else for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Planning Director. We get to hear from Sean.
Joseph.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He'll be assigned.
I was going, darn it, public works. I was one ahead. Go ahead, Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, trustees. Good to see you all. My report's on page sixty of your packet and I want to just highlight a few items therein and then I'm happy to take any questions. Scanning down the bottom of that particular page, wanted to call to attention some of the scheduling changes of the planning zoning commission that I've highlighted here. We will be not meeting on February 2nd due to lack of agenda items. We have a joint P and Z meeting with the County P and Z Commission on February 16th at 6:00 PM. And then we have scheduled an alternative meeting for February 23rd. So I just wanted to kind of highlight a couple of those scheduling changes. The HPC will meet for the first time in 2022 on February 3rd, I believe it is, next week. And then we look forward to coming up with a agenda to guide our discussion with you all on March 8th in a work session focused on architectural design guidelines. Site plans in review, subdivisions in review, special use permits in review, pre-applications that we've had over the month of December. And well, I did on my DV, we're well over 630 registered members on that site. And we continue to grow. We continue to get very good engagement on our newsletters. Our open rate is over 70%, which is extremely high for online newsletters. We're able to generate over a hundred surveys and responses so far to the newest rodeo ground survey, which is a follow-up. So just continually very pleased with that platform and we continue to look for different ways to utilize it across different departments. Code enforcement just launched a page. And we're looking at increasing its use in our development review processes as well. So excited about that. A brief update, this meeting on the Carbon Street development with more to come at our next session. We have met with the fading West team twice now and are working on building those draft term sheets that we talked about last time. I hope to have some drafts for you at our next meeting. But discussions have been very positive and we're also looking at trying to arrange a special invitation to you all and planning zoning commission members to, for a tour in a discussion about anything that's on your minds as a reservation class directly with them. So I've been very pleased with how open, honest and transparent they've been so far. And I really look forward to continuing to develop that relationship. Finally, we had an updated meeting with Boys and Girls Club, talking about where their facility is at and their progress. And it was a great meeting, very productive. And we identified some next steps, which hopefully will involve them coming directly to you with an update sometime in March as well as leading towards hopefully some larger surveying work that needs to be done, cleaning up this block and getting ready for not only their facilities, but other future town planning moments this spot, so. And then if we scroll down to page sixty-two, I'll just briefly run through the water dashboard. So you recall, the first time you saw this was in December. Sort of new format in an attempt to distill somewhat of a snapshot of where we are in our water infrastructure as it relates to SFEs or single-family equivalents. So I think the biggest lesson learned this month, as it was our first month to actually try to update this based on what happened in December, is that this is definitely more of a, a combination of art and math as opposed to just math. So I welcome any questions on this and I want to continue to refine the way that this dashboard is put together so that it's useful as a reference point for you all.
Yes. Okay, I have a question on the art part of it, I guess. Under the current totals section where it starts out with that 1876. Yeah. I can see where those three numbers add up to 2010, which is the number that's in the first set of boxes, but I don't quite follow where those numbers came from. So I'm wondering if you could kind of walk us through that.
Absolutely. So I don't have the spreadsheet that we can necessarily pull up unless we can access that. Where are they? Well, give me a brief narrative and then I can follow up via Philip or directly or at, at our next meeting with the actual breakdown. So the in-use definition that we're looking at is anyone that currently has a water meter that's working and or someone who's been issued a building permit for an active project. We did tweak that definition a little bit from the first time you saw this dashboard. Recognizing that when someone comes in for, let's say, a single-family home and pays all their fees and applies for building permit, it's a issue to building permit. The likelihood of them actually finishing that project and getting a CO is pretty high, at least within the next year and eighteen months. So it didn't feel appropriate to use the terminology dedicated or obligated in that circumstance. It felt more appropriate to use the term. So that 1876 number is, is a total of all current meters in effect, plus those that have been issued building permits since the water dedication fee went into effect. The obligated terminology speaks to the total of SFEs that were, that the town is obligated to serve, but we became obligated before the water dedication fee was enacted last year. One example being the farm phase two apartments. So that's seventy, I'm not going to say that right, so it's, it's fifty some SFEs, I think, that we are committed to serving, but they did not necessarily pay that fee because they came in before the fee was in place. So we term those situations. There's a few other examples around town like Tri-Vista and Sunset Vista Phase Eight, a few others. And then the current dedicated, a term dedicated, we're starting to, to use specifically in the circumstances subdivisions, when we collect a water dedication fee, but we don't have an associated building permit. It's not like they're ready to build and therefore they're not necessarily in use, but we have collected a fee and we are dedicating water to that project. So the, the twenty there is, is South Main Base Two that you all screwed in December. Does that help, Libby?
Yeah, I can.
Other cargo made street apartments or housing not at all, or is that not?
We are, we are going to need fading West to keep the code in all respects, including the water dedication fee and the.
So when we take into account the total SFEs that are available, is it based off of our total water rights or is it based off what the plant is capable of producing right now?
It's, it's my understanding it's based off of our total water rights.
Water rights.
And we cannot reduce our total, total water rights right now, is that correct?
Not out of the, right, that's correct.
Okay.
And it's based on the dry year, dry, the dry year stream.
All right. Okay.
I like that layout, by the way. It's easy to follow.
Very easy to follow. I'm, I'm happy to have a spreadsheet that we use so it backs up each one of those three definitions that the in-use obligated and dedicated. It's more than happy to share that as, as it can help.
Is that what, is that all you have, Joseph?
That's all I have.
Questions for Joseph? Any other ones? Norm?
Reference the Oak Street Medical Offices. Those are going to stay medical?
So the pre-application meeting we had, the, the person that is under contract to purchase those is exploring both keeping them as health-related offices and other potential uses that he's not quite sure of yet.
Oh, like somebody like Soul Vista or?
Yeah, he's, he's exploring his options with various health providers to continue leasing that building in the health space, which would obviously not require a development review process. So we also heard some of his other ideas and helped him understand various processes that you need to follow to change.
Other questions? Is this the first meeting with county?
The first one?
With their planning.
With their planning.
Do you have, do we anticipate more with follow-up or just regular basis?
We are definitely hoping for more. There, there is definitely going to be conversation about a follow-up meeting in May at some point, specifically focused on their land use code. Rewrite process and talking more about there's a, you know, at least our MSA municipal services area areas of design growth. So we are hoping for at least two this year and we are hoping for a regular cadence, or at least one per year.
Be nice to get into that mode. Really would, really would. Thank you, Joseph. Thank you. I know it's been talked about. It's finally happening, best way to put it. Thank you very much. Good report. Now we'll go to maybe public works.
Yeah, we'll go now. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. My report, there it is.
Yeah, we'll go now. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. Um, my report, there it is, page sixty three in the packet. And where to start? Let's, I guess we'll start right there at the top. So get the um annual production comparisons from. Two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty one. So you can kind of see. Um, a little bit of an anomaly there. Um, I think a couple of things that we could probably all agree on is that we had a pretty wet summer during peak demand months. And that probably had the the biggest impact on the um on the build consumption for the year. And then uh definitely the leak repaired in June had uh the biggest influence on the uh the master meter production for June. We still had unaccounted water about twenty percent. Um, but it's interesting, excuse me, to see the uh. You know, the annual usages, um, you know, especially, you know, coming right, you know, right after um. Uh, Joseph's report, we're talking about SFEs and we see um looks like some improvement on an accounted appears to be anyways. But in all likelihood are um just based on the reports that I've been given from June up until now, we've seen the uh the kind of. Monthly drop considerably from, you know, this twelve to fifteen percent range for, um, you know, July and and up until now. So um, we're um, we're, we're, we're really um anticipating a leak happening because that's usually how it works. So we anticipate that, you know, some somewhere somehow, you know, we won't maintain that. But I I think going into um twenty twenty two with with some of our distribution funding. Um, we probably would like to um at least talk and and see about maybe outsourcing some some late detection services. And I think the first place we probably should have them go would be to um the Ivy League um system. So in December, we replaced the master meter and uh and here we we see a pretty uh much larger discrepancy beyond that uh that range that we have been. Looking at um in previous years, I I left the unaccounted blank mostly because the uh it's there were a few unknowns that happened in December. I really had a pretty large leak and um they uh did some distribution system improvements. They repaired the main repaired the leak and installed the fire hydrant. So I know at one point we we completely drained their. Helped to resolve the situation that they had there with our staff and helped them to get that back online and. And make the appropriate measures for for um regulatory standards. Um, but Joseph and his team um helped out with that. And everything looks to be back in order, but I do anticipate that that unaccounted is gonna. Um. Probably be higher than what we've seen. Um, we're going to be doing what we can to initiate proper um responses. And and um let um um the uh the team at Ivy League know what uh what we're what we're seeing and what we have. And and give some recommendations of whatever insight and support that we can provide them and that like to do that. I do think the leak detection is a good place to start. Kickoff meeting next month with a water treatment plan expansion project, get the contract and the agreement squared away. Um, and move forward with the thirty percent in time and procurement process for the C Mar. Um, handful of things in the administrative and engineering projects. Um, I thought I was complete with the standards and specifications. Um, every time I. Think about putting something in my report, I'd find something I need to work on. So a couple of things that we I need to get squared away, mostly due to some language. Um, in the uh cross connection backflow section. Um, but I'm really happy with that um chapter and we are nearing completion with the uh stormwater and and streets. Uh, section as well. So that was getting pretty close. Um, EPA Water System Emergency Response Plan has been submitted and completed. Um, wealth re-improvement engineering underway. Um, hopefully that thing is ready to go yeah this year. And and you can kind of see some of the other things that we're working on. We have a few backlog things that we're trying to get done. I I'm hoping that the um. Public Works um postings and and staffing needs help resolve that. Um, we have a handful of carryover projects from twenty twenty one that we need to get on the uh project management list to do to this for this year. Um, I put a lot of street stuff in here. Um, I have kind of a list of of hot candidates for for asphalt rehab real rehabilitation projects. So overlays, milling, things like that. Yeah, as you can see, we're we're we're. We're a little bit over based on what we have budgeted. Um, so we need to, you know, kind of chip away at that, obviously, to 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 meet. Um, our financial commitment for twenty twenty two. Um, I included a section of unpaid streets, just um just so you can kind of see what we're looking at as well. And um we'll be providing some cost analysis for that. And, you know, I'd like to come back to the board at some point with this list. And and um, you know, a a real contractor price number of what it um what what it would cost to get those streets paid. A lot to do there. Um, and I think we'll have some pretty good numbers for you um in in the next report. But as far as the street projects go, I'd like to have the RFP at least ready to go in February for your review. So um next month sometime, get that out early this year. So at the hopes that maybe we can get our paving projects done. Early part of the asphalt season here in Bena Vista, which is May. I included some of the sidewalk projects too. So this year we we have about sixty thousand dollars to spend on sidewalk. Um, replacements and sidewalk improvements. And uh here's a list of the some of the sidewalks that I see. I'd like to focus pretty, a pretty strong effort on Main Street this year. And get some of the um driveways that have, for the most part, been uh abandoned, you know, part of a different time. So get some of those driveways removed. A good example is um at the Trailhead Building. Um, there's a big, big, long driveway there that really we just need curb and gutter installed there. And there's a couple more places like that. There's a few squares on Main Street that need to be repaired. But I think the the big excitement that I have is is coming in with the um this grinding method. And I think there's a big huge value to to bringing somebody in to help us with our trip hazards versus removing all the squares. Um, the values there and I think a good proportionate amount to um to do. Might be about maybe uh eight to twelve thousand. Uh, dollar investment to do this project. Um, precision concrete came in and they surveyed every sidewalk in town um in Bena Vista. So um Tyler Owens, our street foreman, um provides provided us a master list and they graded the sidewalks. And obviously not all the sidewalks can be um rehabbed for function. There's quite a few that are going to have to be removed. But there's also quite a few that uh can be can be uh worked into back into shape with this method. Pretty bad picture there, but you can kind of see what, you know, what it would look like. So the discoloration from the, you know, decades of patina surface wear on the. On the sidewalks where you have the cut there and the uh the cut's a good example of what uh their methods are for ADA compliance. So. It's a pretty strong component in their specialized service. Yeah, so I I think that's probably something that we would like to do in April. And um I'll have a uh a complete inventory of what those projects are um by April, probably next month as well. Parks normal operations, we interviewed a couple of the uh potential candidates for some of the job openings we have in that department last week. And uh. A few of the developments um progress. So Sunset Vista Phase Eight is nearing completion. And public work staff is in the process of a preliminary acceptance inspection. So we want to look at some of the trails that were installed and and curb and gutter and water and things like that. Um, there's a few things that are missing, I think, but I don't think it's going to impact. Um, preliminary acceptance. I think some things that we see that are installed were uh some of the street lighting right now. And so as long as we can get to get those installed soon as soon as we can, that'd be great. Farm Phase Two Apartments, they're seem to be moving along. I think um we're still looking at a couple of components that are pretty high level as far as engineering. Design goes. And um the one thing I I can see that wrote this is uh we started um discussions with the Court Street Social. Team on the uh the water main extension portion of that project. So hoping to get that done hopefully. During spring break. It's going to have a big impact on Main Street. We're going to be tapping into the water main at Court Street and Main Street and connecting that to. Running down South Court Street for half a block there. Um, let's see. I think that's good for me. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Question for Sean? Go ahead, Libby.
Sean, I'm looking at the uh list of street projects. Um, and do you recall what the budget is for for street projects?
Yeah, I think it's a three fifty.
Three fifty, yeah. Um, I'm not sure how to look at this chart.
Yeah, I think I really wanted to get across there, so I can help you with that.
It's just the last two columns.
Yeah.
Seems like maybe the total would come up to be another sixty thousand or so.
Yeah, there's um the, I think that the discrepancy is there on the South Pleasant Meadow Lane where there's not a total square foot price. And but there is a a total square foot price in the last column. See that that ninety three thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so that was um in there kind of as a last minute. Maybe um we were looking at doing a portion of that first and then wanted to see what, you know, what we could afford to do. Because it's, you know, that that area over there, those rehab projects have done really well. Um, so um, you know, the San Juan and um. It's a question. There's so wanted to see what we could stretch out there. I think the big thing, yeah, apologize for that inconsistent information and in total prices. So I really, you know, wanted to get give you an idea of of some of the um, you know, pricing that we've been able to acquire, you know, over the years. With our engineering and with our actual contractor prices based on, you know, work performed. But more than anything, I just kind of wanted to show you where the list was. One of them that was kind of. You know, a little interesting for me and it's probably going to be interesting for you. It's it's like Linderman Avenue. And that's from Main Street, you know, to the highway. And so that's where the the library is and Chippy County um services are also on that street. And you know, that that street's starting to really show its age, you know, one of the challenges that we're, you know, that we're having to kind of identify is, you know, the age of the infrastructure. Dulled. Um, so we have a pretty old water maintenance and, you know, surface line connections that are probably close to my age, um, which is pretty old. So um, you know, just this, so this is kind of some of the things that we're looking at too. And um, I think that those are hard, hard evaluations to do. Um, but I just, you know, wanted to get your, you know, get your eyes on on these locations and um, yeah. I don't think Letterman's a deal breaker. That street's in horrible condition, but I think wanting to see what the, you know, the install price is for a milling project there. And, you know, the uh repaving is is a pretty, pretty important um kind of component to to how to approach something that might need more work.
Yeah, thanks. So those are really, it's uh like looking at a couple of different options there.
It is, yeah, it is. And.
Okay, thanks.
You have other questions for Sean?
Well, and forgive me, I know that we've been through this before, but with the Ivy League. Unaccounted water. Is the six hundred thousand gallons monthly discrepancy, is that billed to them somehow?
It is not right now.
What is the value of that in dollars? I I eventually don't, you know, we'll need to worry about it in SFEs, but um.
Yeah, well, with their, you know, they have that extraterritorial rate as well. I I mean, I I could probably here in a few minutes, probably pull that up.
Residential.
It's. Are, you know, based on our current water rates, it's a, it's a pretty sizable amount of of revenue.
Okay, and there there's just not that much leverage that we have over that situation as I understand.
No, I think that, no, I I think that we do. I think um, I think the one thing that um. I'd always been concerned about was what we what we knew, and that was the meter accuracy. So now we have a meter that we know it's accurate, you know, it's, we know that it's reading correctly. The the previous water meter that was in there as the master meter was the original meter. And we had um brought in a consultant to um. Excuse me, to to test accuracy. And it was out of range. And so the recourse that we took was to get a meter in there that was verifiable and was accurate. So that was installed in December and or the end of November. So we had a whole month to look at um what was happening, you know, within that system. Unfortunately, we had a couple of events that happened as well. In all likelihood, um, you know, it 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 was probably not over a hundred thousand gallons. Of water loss based on, you know, the leaks and and the repair and the methods that we had to do. We had to, you know, perform some pretty extensive flushing and grab some water quality samples and send them to the state to verify. Um, you know, um chlorine residuals and 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 um. Uh, back tea analysis. So but I think going into uh February or January, I think we should be able to see some real numbers. And um I've reached out to the uh representative for Ivy League and we're going to sit down and look at this. And we're going to sit down and look at the um the yearly um report as well. Um, I think there's a few different ways to look at this and um one of them is the uh the water loss in. And in relationship to SFEs or waterline connections. So I can think that there could be um some issues with that based on the agreement. But I think more than anything, our our code really captures our ability to uh control uh wasted water. And we'll try to figure out how to do that um with uh, you know, with a good, strong partnership and relationship with with uh, you know, that community. Thank you.
I think that's a a good point, Dave. Not uh not that we're ignoring it, but maybe we need to focus more on it. And kind of like say, you know, something needs to be done. Because it's it's pretty crazy.
Yeah.
Because it's been what, like, ten?
SFEs remaining.
Twenty years, you just.
Yeah.
Yeah, and leaking, it's been off.
Yeah. Yeah. And they do pay a premium. I mean, uh, or, you know, well, additional. But it's, is it enough? Is, yeah, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, right. You know, one thing I'd say too is um now that we have a known quantity, you know, with, you know, we see that that range probably increased. You know, maybe fifteen to twenty percent more is what it looks like to me. Uh, based on past reports, you know, now we're able to actually capture, you know, a little bit more of a an idea of what's happening in our system, you know, with the the twelve percent. Unaccounted throughout the whole system. And we're looking at, you know, roughly half a million gallon water loss with this. And, you know, that probably brings us up another couple percentage. It improves our, you know, if we were able to resolve this leak or, you know, um, get it, get it mitigated to an acceptable range. Our our account is collectively looks even better. Um, especially because this time of year where, you know, where we're billing for eight million and we're we're producing nine million and change, you know, somewhere in there. So this is, this is the time of year where we're producing at least amount of water and the discrepancies in the past have usually been much higher. And we've been in the twenty, twenty five, thirty percent ranges.
Yeah, and I think, uh, and you mentioned it, it encroaches on the agreement that we have.
It could. It it's possible, I I I did really look at that volumetrically wise in S or in in SFEs and in relationships to the agreements. Um, waterline connections, I Jeff's here.
Yeah, well, exactly.
Is there a way to, because we're going through the the rate study soon, is there a way to up their rate until it is taken care of? It could be like, well, you'll have this rate until it's below a certain percentage.
And then it. Yeah, I think so. And, you know.
As an incentive.
Yeah, and 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 Joel or Jeff might be able to answer this better, but I mean, there's. But I mean, there's a, there's, I think that there's a strong chance that we could probably go back to the master meter and use the billing for that.
Yeah.
And it's, but that's that, you know, now's the time, if we're reviewing rate for town, that would be the time to look at that overall, you know.
I would.
It it is uh one point six times written into the agreement. Yeah, that's pretty much untouched.
Right?
I would.
Yeah, yeah.
Worth checking into and also with um town growth, the amount of SFEs. Um, I'm not sure what all the Ivy League entails, how many houses, how many units. But eventually, could we withhold them to a certain amount of water? Um, if they're only gonna get a certain amount of water for those houses, I think their incentive to find a leak would be much greater. But they can't go on year after year after year wasting that amount of water.
And I don't know how the agreement would address that, something like that.
Yeah, this would, Jeff might be on the way in, because the original agreement had a, they were given so many water taps, uh, connection points for um essentially that that water that was provided. And I think it was about maybe a hundred and have eleven left.
Oh, do they?
Yeah, uh, well, clearly they're using more than that. So so I think it it's an easy case that that takes up that eleven extra. But maybe there's something in there that they're using more than what was allotted um through this leak or something. But that's, it gets into some fine tuning on that. There's the original agreement, then there was an updated agreement. And the original had a potential with this master metering and and some teeth in that. But the updated one, we've lost a lot of the teeth. So it's kind of a weird, weird thing. We'll we'll dig into it, see what avenue there is.
See if there's, if there's anything, if there's something. Good, very good, good question, Devin.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Oh, can you hear me, Mayor? Sorry, I didn't just jump in.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I mean, I just didn't want to sit here staring at the screen silently, looking dumb. But um, uh, yeah, it is, it is a little complicated, the agreement. There's a lot of different provisions in there. And I think that if the, if the board does want us to do a more in-depth look at it and give you some more specific information, it would probably be best to do that in executive session. And, you know, give us a little time to look at the agreement again. I've looked at it so many times, but I, you know, depending upon the question and what you're thinking about doing, we probably have several different options and answers for you, because the agreement does contemplate that there would not be a system that wasted water. Um, and there's other, there's remedies for certain things and there's certain amounts of uh SFEs that are entitled to. So I think it could probably speak better if you had a chance to actually look at it and get you some really good, hard answers, rather than just trying to wing it during a meeting like this.
Good point, Jeff. I think this is raises the question. If nothing else, questions put out there, maybe we can have further discussion.
It'll be good with the new water meter to see what that looks like.
Yeah. And Jeff, uh, excuse me, uh, Sean reiterated that too. Let's see what January looks like, because they found a leak, you know, things like that. So, yeah, yeah, no, this is good, very good.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Sean. Anything else for Sean? Hey, Jack?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and trustees. Um, so my report can be found on page sixty-seven. Um, we had one staff out for uh COVID protocol for about a week or so. Uh, all that to say, we're all back and everybody's healthy and we're full staff. Uh, operations are pretty good. We're steady as this time of year, maybe even up a little bit. Um, the business report, we're we're getting ready to, and you'll see it later on in this uh, later on in the meeting, a resolution to sign the agreement for twenty twenty-two uh FA funded project for apron rehab. I'll go into that more detail when we get to that section. But basically, it's the design phase and we've gotten all the paperwork and ready for sign. Like to thanks Jeff Parker for helping us out and getting the verbiage correct. Sort of that pushed that along a little quicker than, and we got it signed. So I think um both the FAA and DIBL are happy with that agreement. So it's just a matter of the board having a look at it. Uh, operation wise, we, you know, this is December, but in the, it re- respect, it's the end of the year, total year, so we're up all the way across the board. Uh, some big takeaways here, the jet and turbine were up, you know, thirty-nine, forty percent. Um, the amount of people transitioning through this airport up thirty-four percent. And then, you know, with the larger aircraft, seventy-nine percent. Um, and then that reflects in the Jet A uh sales up thirty-two percent. So we're 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 seeing more traffic, bigger jets. Uh, and we're starting to come close to the five thousand dollar, uh, five thousand operations. So this is a big number, so we're starting to see some larger activity, more activity and bigger jets. So uh, and also, it's not in the report, but we're si- seeing a lot of folks asking for hangar development. So this will be something that we're big, uh, we're gonna be looking at in the next uh, this year and next year, like uh, the next transition to hangar development. Um, but we're doing pretty well. And then, like I said, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss the um runway development or apron rehab here shortly, later on. Um, other than that, if there's any questions, that's the report.
Questions for Jack?
I kind of have a, what's the, what's the largest size aircraft the uh airport can can handle in its current state?
Well, uh, so we're, that's part of what's gonna happen. We're gonna do some testing on that runway to figure out, but basically fifty thousand pounds. So we can take some of these, we we can't take like uh big jet airliners that you see at DIA, but we can take some of these large corporate jets, uh, I don't know how to describe it, challengers, you know, your Lear jets, Gulfstreams, some fairly big jets. And we are seeing bigger jets come in, uh, so they're they're pushing sixty, seventy thousand pounds.
Thank you.
I've got one, Jack and Miss Mayor.
Yes.
Um, the the increase in Jet A and the bigger aircraft coming in, that's, that's it's statistically significant. And I'm just thinking, maybe the, is there some data that we can figure out what, what, what's happening? What, what, what the change means, who's coming here, why are they coming here? You know, I don't know how much interaction you've got with them, but it seems that's a pretty significant number.
Yeah, so what we've seen, there's a lot of folks, uh, I think, I think part of the, part of it is the COVID thing in the last couple of years, people are just, you know, getting out of the cities. Uh, we're, we're seeing like some of the bigger jets are coming in, they're buying up big chunks of land, uh, especially out in the um, you know, fair play area and in in around the area. Uh, we're getting people that just said, that's it, I'm moving. Even the, even just the small uh aircraft coming in, people just moved up to the area. And and so I think that's what it is, it's just people just said, you know what? It's time for me to move to God's country here. And we're seeing people uh transitioning to the mountains.
It it just seems like uh the airport's a a good spot to do some sort of data collection. I I realize that, you know, the observations are anecdotal of who's coming here and why, but I it just seems that.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Think about it a little longer, but.
Yeah, we can certainly um uh speak to more of the people coming in. Um, but that's part of the re, like you, you'll see the uh, in years past, we just tracked, uh, you know, folks just on and off the plane. But we're tracking the people that are coming to collect them. So that's why we're seeing a a lot of people transitioning through here, through this airport, you know. And then obviously, they're not staying at the airport, they're going downtown. So I think the last couple of years, it just really is boiling down. People have wanted to get out of the city because of the uh COVID and um the mountain towns, not just us, but all the little mountain towns have been discovered.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, any other questions for Jack? All right. Business items. First, we have a public hearing. Uh, local historic designation for the Book Nook Building. Should the Board of Trustees approve adoption of Resolution Number Ten, Series twenty twenty-two, entitled a resolution, resolution designating the Book Nook Building located at one twenty-seven South San Juan Avenue as a historic structure? We open the public hearing. Um, do we want to hear from staff first, Mark?
Um, I'll introduce the applicant to speak first. Uh, the applicant is with us tonight, is Owen Lentz, representing Owen, Catherine Lentz for one twenty-seven uh South San Juan. And I'm hoping Owen is there to turn on his uh microphone and uh turn his camera on. He'll, he'll go, he'll start, and then I'll follow up with staff.
Okay. Owen, are you with us?
And Owen, if you're there, there's a microphone on your lower left audio that you should be able to click on to speak. See if we can get him. Stop me. Owen, are you there? If not, I I can move forward and see if we can get him to. You want, I can reverse the order for staff.
Why don't you go ahead and start up, Mark?
I don't see him.
He's on, but, yeah.
Okay.
He just stepped away, so uh felt like he would give me the ability, he's actually calling, excuse me. Yeah, true. Try disconnecting, connect back in and we'll get you in here and I'll present staff while you're doing that. From the Zoom meeting and then reconnect. All right. We'll see you in a bit. Sir, he's having computer issues. This mic was working earlier today when we went over. So I will share my screen and present the staff report while he is doing. So um, this is a request by the Book Nook, which is owned by Owen and Kathleen Lentz. The property is one twenty-seven South Juan, which most people know uh as the book though. Um, for those of you familiar with the location, it's just one block south of Main Street, West Main Street and San Juan Avenue. And it's just north of School Street and uh the church that's there at that intersection where trunk or treat always happens in the fall. Um, kind of blow up just more of the property itself, looking down on it. The property fronts on the San Juan Avenue. And then there is a detached, of course, was originally a garage, which is now an accessory building for the property um backing up to the alley. And just a fun fact, for those of you who don't know, that this is actually on the, the south side of the property is on School Street, which is where the school used to be directly across the alley from this, prior to it being demolished for the church that's there per. For those of you don't necessarily know what the building looks like, it's this little mess in a bungalow, single story, story and a half. Currently green, it is home to the book. Um, that's the photograph on the left and the site plan um with the house facing San Juan, which would be up for purposes of the map is up the top. The um, the, the, Owen and Kathleen Lentz did present this application and it has gone to the Historic Preservation Commission that occurred on December second. And as part of that, um, they have not met since December second. So we've included the draft minutes in your packet, so you can see what they talked about. And that's on page eighty in your packet. But the application met these criteria. The the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed in and with with the criteria that I highlighted specifically, has specific elements of an architectural style or period, demonstrates superior craftsmanship or high artistic value, represents built environment of a group of people of an era of history, exemplifies cultural, political, economic or social heritage of the community and an unique example of an, and, oh, excuse me, that's on the wrong one, enhances sense of identity of the community. So that, that one is actually on the IML down here. The wrong one, but those are the criteria that Historic Preservation Commission looked at and said that they agreed with and made a recommendation to the board historic local landmark designation for the property of one twenty-seven South Juan. Um, for those of you uh who haven't necessarily read the whole staff report, all the, the big thing was this property was built in nineteen thirty-five. And I'll say started in nineteen thirty-five. If you remember in the thirties, we were in great depression. And it took them a a few years to finish. So they finished the outside and it took them, I think, eight or ten years to finish all the roots on the inside. So they had a weather type structure, but they didn't have it necessarily completed. The, when they originally completed the house, there were three, three rooms told that were finished. So they built the upstairs later, they built the dining room and living room later. So all, and I think based upon some of the information that we received, that they did a very good job of using building materials from other buildings. So they cobbled together stuff from around town to get this structure done. And so that was one of the unique elements, given what was going on in the nineteen thirties in America and around the world. So that kind of adds to the uh, the cultural, political, economic or social air uh heritage of the community. So it also, before becoming the Book Nook, was an ice cream parlor operated out of the back of that. So back before zoning, it was operating as a a slightly mixed use building with some commercial. They were selling ice cream out of that, prior to it becoming the Book Nook by the current app. You know, I don't know if Owen made it back in or not. But I will update any questions that you may have before it's, it gets in here.
Questions for staff?
Okay, is he back?
Back on. Owen, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
There, we can hear you now.
Go ahead, Owen, if you would.
Okay, um, I don't know if you can see me or not, I.
Video?
Um. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I know that the uh, uh, see, so start my video. I keep getting these questions.
There we go.
All right, uh, I don't want to take up very much of your time. I think the uh report, which I think is on page seventy-three, pretty well says it all. And uh, uh, I've always, always been fascinated with history and we've always called the Book Nook his historic location. And we would just like to uh make that uh kind of official uh with a, you know, local historic landmark. I'll be glad to take any questions that anybody has.
Any questions for Owen? Comments?
What a neat building.
That's like going to grandmother's house.
I don't hear any other questions. Uh, thank you, Owen. Uh, we appreciate you joining us tonight.
Well, uh, thank you, and I finally figured out how to get into the Zoom. But thanks to Mark, uh, I made it, yay.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is a public hearing. I open this public hearing for public uh questions, public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make comments? To remind you, you can raise your hand in chat. Star nine on your telephone.
I'm not seeing anyone in the chat as of yet.
I am going to close public comments. Any clarifying questions for staff?
Anything for Owen?
Thank you, Owen. Okay, I closed a portion of the public, public hearing. Thoughts, trustees, motion?
Make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number Ten.
Second?
Second, the crazy, further discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trusty Bay?
Yes.
Trusty Crutsey?
Yes.
Yes.
Trusty Row?
Yeah.
Trusty Swisher?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all very much and congratulations, Owen. Take care.
Thanks, Owen.
Thank you much.
Next item on the agenda is updates to the unified unified development code, the U D C in ordinance. Number one, series twenty twenty, bound number one, series twenty twenty two, in ordinance, mending certain sections of title seven, eight and sixteen of the municipal code concerning single room. Occupancy multifamily dwellings in the highway commercial district creation of a small lot, single family residential district. R one point five zone district and exempting certain small multifamily dwellings from site plan. Who's got this one? I'm looking. There it is. Mark again.
Yes, thank you. So this is in ordinance that's before you that deals with four specific areas, so. I'll present for staff those. Four sections and I'll give you opportunities for questions after each section and then. If there is public comment at the end, I would just say we'll take those questions at the end on even of the four. But I want to make sure that you guys understand the things that we're presenting, so I'm going to go through each item specifically, so. What we have here before you is part of our efforts. That we've started for trying to identify ways to help housing in our community. This also then leads into some of the work that we'll be doing with our code audit that Joseph is. Started working on and started getting a consultant together to work on to bring back any other items that. We can control to try and deal with making housing affordable. Can't necessarily deal with every single component. I can't change the price of lumber or concrete. Or the availability of labor, but I can. We can control things like our zoning and so these are some initial efforts to start with there, so I'll start in. There are four different components, single room occupancy as a new use and I'll start off with that one. Multifamily allowed in the H C zone district. It's currently allowed, but it has to be part of a vertically mixed use building. Some other words, it has to have commercial in that building. The third one is a new residential zone district. The R one point five and the last one, which is a fairly small minor change, but allowing for small multifamily. Those are units that are four units or less allowed if with a building permit. If all the infrastructure is in place and we don't have to do engineering for water or streets or those other elements that aren't there. So if those infrastructure components aren't there, then we would do that through a site plan process as we currently do. So again, when we look to make changes to the unified development code, there are criteria in our code that we use to evaluate. First is consistent with comprehensive plan. Second, are there any other conflicts with the municipal code or the unified development code itself? Third, is it needed to address a community need? Fourth. Is it needed to respond to changing policy or conditions? Fifth, is it consistent with the intent of the zone districts? Would it improve compatibility among land uses? Would it result in an orderly and logical development? Then lastly, would it not result in significant impacts to the natural environment? So those are the criteria that we use to look at and. In the staff report that we have for the planning commission documents, those are. All listed for each one of those. We took those to the planning commission this fall. So starting in October and through November, we had several meetings with the planning and zoning commission where they reviewed this. And provided input and provided tweaks. So we've incorporated all of their recommendations into one ordinance for all four of these before you. So with that, I'll start just a big overview. Talking about the comprehensive plan, we do have a comprehensive plan. That has a housing chapter and in that housing chapter, there are five overarching goals. And we believe these proposals address four of those five goals. So promoting development of a range of housing opportunities and choices. Locate new housing within existing neighborhoods. Maintain and enhance its communities' overall appearance. And the fourth one, funding mechanism and administrative framework for affordable housing should be created and developed. If you have questions on that, I'll be happy to address those, but with that, I'll start in with the very first one, single room occupancy. So we have a couple. Of folks who are interested in. An alternative living arrangement that isn't currently allowed in our code. We have a couple of structures that actually provide that. And we don't necessarily have anything our code to address it. So we have proposed a new use, single room occupancy or S R O. Which is a residential structure characterized by a group of people who don't meet the definition of household living, so. A bunch of roommates as opposed to a large family. Tendency is arranged on a monthly or longer basis. We're trying to make sure that we're getting long term housing, not short term. Structures are used for single remarks. You may have a common cooking, sanitary facilities, but individual bedrooms are rented out. As separately said, so you're renting a bedroom and access to the kitchen or the common space. They're they're not associated with an educational facility, those we call a dorm. So we have created this new use, single room occupancy and we've created zone districts where it is either permitted with a P. Or it is permitted if you get a special use permit. Those are in the R one and R two. Otherwise, it's the M U one, M U two, R three, M U M S and H C where the these could be done as it allowed you. There are use specific criteria. I'll quickly go through these. You can't subdivide, you can't create a condominium per bedroom. You have to actually have it as a rentable space. Short term rentals will be limited and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Orange, show me the applicable building code requirements, so. Under the building code, if you have a bedroom, you have to have a means for egress to get out if there's an emergency. So we want to make sure that no one's running out of closet or an interior room without windows as a bedroom. Shucks. Yeah. So and if there is the need for a change of use that the county building department needs to, we want to make sure that that's done so that it's documented. From the building perspective, we do have parking requirements and I'll talk about those. And then it has to be residential design incompatible with the architecture of the distant structure, so. If you're going to do new improvements, we want to make sure it blends with the house and the neighborhood. And then lastly, short term rentals shall be limited and that's this next page. So depending upon the number of leasable areas. Gives you a limit, the ability to do some short term rentals, subject to the short term rental regulations. That we have in our licensing requirements. But basically, if you have the one S R O unit that you don't have the ability to do a short term rental, if you have two or three. You can get one of those to be a short term rental if you can meet the licensing requirements. Four to seven bedrooms, you can have up to two short term rental and then if you have eight or more, you're limited to three. So this was part of the discussion from the planning commission. We do have some people who are interested. And they would like to be able to provide that, but they also. Know that in order to build these things and create these improvements can cost money, so they'd like to have the ability to pay for those improvements. With some short term rentals, you need to meet the licensing requirements in the code. And then. Parking is another element that is basically one additional parking space depending upon where you are. In in the the community that if. You have two short single room occupancy units, you need one parking space per vehicle off street. And you need one bicycle parking space. So our goal is to hopefully have the place. Places where people can have the ability to get around town and not necessarily needing a car, so. I missed that slide somewhere. It's somehow must delete, but there's a parking requirement specific to that use, so. That is in addition to parking that you would need if a person who is running that also lives in their own unit on the property. So we did have a good discussion about all these standards with someone who is proposing to do that over on. Cedar and Church Street, the old church. Building that is connected to a single family house, so we want to make sure we're accounting for the single family house. Plus, if the church portion gets converted to S R Os, we want to make sure we have parking requirements for that if it's converted.
How does the parking increase with the number of occupancy?
So i- if you have, for example, two S R Os. And you have one vehicle parking space required and one bicycle park. If you have four S R O units, you would need two parking spaces for that for a vehicle and two bicycle parks. So it's one for every two.
Gotcha.
You know, so questions there before we move on.
This one, yeah.
Yeah, so for this first section, I was. So mentioned helping help housing in the community. And I think that touches on long term housing, right, and affordability and so. For I have a few questions. How do we guarantee affordability, though? So when you have this interested party?
It, yeah, it, we don't, we don't necessarily have a mechanism to guarantee affordability, but. If someone has a large structure, we do have several structures in town that have, for example, seven bedrooms. They have the ability now to do a lease for five of those seven bedrooms to make available to. Five individuals who are hopefully paying less rent for that bedroom and access to bathrooms and kitchens. So they don't need to pay rent on an entire house.
Right, right, right. Okay, and then I guess. So I'm reading through all of it, obviously, like I know long term, like and I'm, I'm a fan of having places like this for people that. Have the ability to, you know, have a space, so, but. It's weird to me that. You know, it like. So I'm off for S T Rs in the space is almost half, depending on how many you have.
So half is long term renters, the other half is. You know, an S T R and then also is this in the same place? So if I'm a long term renter. And then is the room next to me like the, hey, people are coming and going all the time, because.
Potentially, and that is one of the.
Awkward.
Yeah, potentially, that would, that is one of the things that I think we would have to have a conversation with. At the time of building permit, if they're making changes on how are you organizing these spaces?
Right.
To have the ability for a person there for a day as opposed to a person who's there for thirty days or a year or six months.
Right, I guess I'm very focused on. Being careful with S T Rs and seeing this, though I love the idea of having the single room occupancy for people, you know, I've. I know quite a few people are in campers or cars and so this would be something very nice for them and it, I, I love that. I just hate to see that maybe half of those spaces would go to short term rentals.
Yeah, it, it, based upon this chart, isn't necessarily a half. It, it, it is when you're like, if you had two red quarters, one possibly could be. If you can meet the licensing requirements that board approved last year. When you get to four to seven, that's two and then over eight, you only get three. So we, we did put a cap on it. This number element was an element that the planning commission did talk about. We did spend some additional time. And this is the one that staff presented to planning and zoning commission and they chewed on for a little bit and. Made a recommendation for this particular proposal.
If I could just jump into some of, some of the discussion in the planning zoning commission was around. The ideal of all long term, no S T Rs. Versus the practicality of saying, well, if we do that, if we, if we say no S T Rs are allowed. The, the, the actual chances that someone would pursue this use and actually use it at all. Really goes down, especially based on some of the interested folks that we've been talking to. And so it was sort of one of the balancing acts of saying. Do we, do we go for the perfect when we might not, but no one might pursue it because they can't afford it? Or do we go for something that we all feel is a compromise that would increase our net number of long term rental units? And part of the reason that we actually have a viable pathway of seeing them built is by allowing some amount of. Does that make sense? So that was also part of the discussion.
I mean, I can see, I can understand some of that, but I think S T Rs within a single home occupancy is all flat out weird. So if you have somebody, if I'm running a room and then the person next to me, that's rooms flipping every other night. And we're sharing spaces. I feel almost bad for the long term renters and I feel like the person that owns the unit or the building, it's. But that just doesn't seem, I don't know, ethical, ethical to me maybe. So I mean, I'll, I'll just, I'll be blunt with it, so. But I do know in the other things, there are no S T Rs available and I appreciate that and I know we'll get to that, but I had to call this out because I think. We're going through this whole packet with the idea of affordable housing, long term housing. And this comes up and I'm just like, it just stings a little bit because it doesn't, it doesn't jive and I, I appreciate their. Developers and interested parties and, and wanting to create these places, but I'd lean back and say, hey, well, let's, let's look for more people then. Because if that's the breaking point, I think there could be more out there and then if it's not the right time, then we wait for the right person, but I don't want to. Give away the farm for something that might not be great long term and could create potential issues with. You know, for one building. That's just my two cents.
And if I may, the, there are a couple of structures in town that we know that are capable of this. That are a seven bedroom house and a. Another space that's attached to a house that could potentially have, I think, probably comfortable six units, so. If they do make those changes, that would be something we would review at the time of the building. Or if it's an existing structure, that change of use requirement. To get the building department in there to make sure that these rooms are safe. On an individual basis by having that, meaning the building code requirement. So that's why we have that change of use requirement.
So the way I can see it is we're basically allowing a hostel, kind of.
We're, we're allowed, a hostel would be short term rental.
Right, a long term hostel.
A, a long term roommate living situation would be that.
So yeah, so wouldn't that theoretically incentivize renters to charge people more? Because they're, instead of in a roommate situation where you're renting out rooms for one larger rent. You're splitting up all the rents to individual rooms. Wouldn't that charge, wouldn't people? Charge people more for that? That's how I would see it, is that it would be. You know, instead of getting a roommate, you're, you're, you're splitting it up into individual sections, correct?
You have bedrooms with common access to common, like kitchens.
I know that. I've been in that house that you talk about on church and cedar and yeah, it's like a ton of little rooms. So theoretically, that would be, each renter would have a different room with a common kitchen. So I don't know, I see that as a way to. Charge people more theoretically, but.
Yeah, we do not have language specific to the amount of rents being charged. The goal is to try and get more rooms available for rent. For a long term basis, so those folks who are here working for the summer or. Need to find a place, need to be here to be able to find a place to find a long term place because the housing market's challenged.
Well, yeah, so would that be any different than renting a room? It'd be the same.
It, well.
Theoretically.
Yeah, I mean, there are houses out there that I know that I've seen.
Right.
You know, people will run out of three bedroom house, but they don't, they don't necessarily define who's living there.
Right.
So I've seen groups of five or six people living in a three bedroom house.
Yeah.
The goal is to try and get that occupancy so that if there are available bedrooms that someone. Couldn't make available for long term living, that there's an option available. So that we have this covered in the code and it isn't something that would otherwise not be allowed in our code.
Okay.
Can I say, I don't know how much of a segue this is, but when that code audit that we, the grant we applied for, when. When is, what is the timeframe on that? Can I?
I will turn that over.
I will turn that over. So we're just finalizing a contract.
Okay.
This week with that consultant. And so we would, we would anticipate kicking that work off in the coming few weeks.
Okay. Just contemplating alternatives to increasing density. This, then, I don't want to say it seems premature, but I'm just wondering. If we're, if, if, if something's coming up that we're gonna look at that might change our lens on this or prevent, pre- present other, other. Other uh alternatives to, to density. And do, and is, is, is this, is this decision time sensitive?
Well, I think, I mean, the, the short answer is no, you're not, obviously you're not required to take action before you would like to, I think.
Sure.
The, for us, it's been a, a tool in the toolbox conversation versus a, a, any sort of a silver bullet conversation.
Okay.
And, and it's been interesting in this code consultant. Um, search we've been doing, we, we've notified everyone of these four potential changes that are under review. And the consultants actually came back with thoughts on each one of these as part of their interviews. And all of them felt strongly that each of these four provided another tool in the toolbox. And so it was, it led to good conversations with these consultants who have experience with, you know, many, many other municipalities around the nation. Um, I don't think that delaying this until, let's say, September, when we have more recommendations from a code, code consultant. Would, would necessarily um. At the soft table, we change it based on the code.
So the other part of that is in a month, less than a month, we're in a wider discussion. This, this. Impacts that. So I, I, again, our, our lens might shift. If we were to have this conversation tonight versus a month versus September. So I, I just, the, the time sensitivity thing was my main question.
So this was one of the things that, you know, prior to this code audit stuff occurring, we. We said, are, are there other things? We had kind of started down that path of finding other ways. Try and get more housing just from our own proactive sense. So the fact that it has gone through the planning commission, got to this point is. Is a result of us just doing that work ahead of this consulting thing because. We started this prior to even putting in for that.
I think it's, it, it makes sense. I think it's great.
I, I think it's a, it's a good point. Um, and regarding the water strategy discussion, I. I think what I would. Uh, and not to try to make a decision on this code tonight necessarily, but. I think. Whether, whether this is, these things are approved tonight or not. Uh, being mindful of these as mechanisms to try to achieve specific types of housing, because I believe the board. When we bring forward the water discussions, some of the prompt from staff is going to be. How do you want to utilize? The remaining water. Remaining water could be what you see on the report that was presented tonight from the planning department. It could be higher than that if we add more water resources, but there will always be a certain amount of water that's left. So the question that you will, will start to wrestle with in February is. Do you want to utilize remaining water for specific housing types? So regardless of these things are added to the code now or later. These are the tools, these are the specific housing types. That you could start to refine from the water strategy, water policy side as well. And say, well, these, this is what we're, we would like to you to, to achieve with the remaining water. So I don't, I, I see the point. If the board wants to hold off on this, that's okay, but I do think that. Um, we could add these options to the code and it doesn't. Doesn't change our water situation or the potential to add more policy from a water standpoint.
And, and existing houses are already accounted for those rooms.
Correct.
They're already accounted that way. Right, they're, they're already accounted that way. Now, a new build would not be. Obviously, that's something else, but then that would come into play when we, when we address it that way. The other thing that I, and I appreciate Devon's comments, but when I read through this, nowhere does it say affordable housing. This is a housing option. It's not necessarily saying affordable housing, it's just saying it's another option that we're going to put on the table to help. Alleviate a short shortage of work, workforce housing. Short, whether it be short-term, thirty days or more, winter, summer. But it doesn't say, hey, we're going to get you in there for four hundred, you know, four hundred a month, doesn't say it anywhere there.
But it does say in section I is consistent with the comprehensive plan. You go down to the last policy housing. Opportunities in particular, affordable housing should not be displaced by tourist rentals. So when I read that and I see that, I'm all for the single-room occupancy and that being a tool to help housing. I don't like that we're going to give up at least one-third of it for short-term rentals. And especially in a situation where it's just rooms in a place together where you shared living space.
I could be more okay with that if there were individual housing units versus in a place where you have.
You know, if I, if I was a person living in, you know, had my one room and I psyched to have my one room and. The room next to me was flip-flopping every other day and they were doing all kinds of crazy stuff like. I, I mean, I guess that's the choice you make by moving into that long, you know, the, that space. But I also want to look out for the people that, hey, maybe that's their only opportunity and. Maybe they prefer not to be in that, but it's better than a ten up on Four Mile. I don't think it's, I just, like I said, I don't think that's an ethical move. And I think. If the, if whoever the developer is that really wants, I don't want to create this policy or change code to satisfy some developer or. Whoever, because that's what they want. I want to do what's best for us. I don't think short-term rentals in a single-room occupancy. Space is the right thing to do.
But I agree with you, Gina. I think it's a COVID nightmare.
Yeah, yes.
And COVID isn't always going to exist, but you could be living there. Um, and you're doing shift work. STRs and shift work don't mingle very good. Uh, STR, are they gonna be? Uh, if you're, if there's four rooms and they're all for long-term. Uh, you will get to know each other a little bit and you will communicate your needs and. Um, there's two bathrooms, so you have to share. So this is really when I need to get ready for work. This is when you need to get ready. For work, short-term rental people aren't going to care. It's going to be.
Also have a guy midnight shift and a guy day shift side by side and it's not gonna, there'll be conflict all the time too. So. There's different ways to throw that out there and see what sticks. Obviously, you, you, there's no guarantee the guy that lives next to you is going to have the same work shift you are, just saying.
Yeah, the way, the way I see this is I see it as a hostel, dormitory, a hotel, and you're just painting it a different color. And uh, you know, I don't even think about the short-term rental aspect of this. I think of it as a renter. I've been a renter. Since I've moved here, I've rented individual places, I've shared rooms, and I see this as a, as. A way for landlords to charge people more. And that's, I see it because I know I, I, I lived in a four-bedroom house. So I had three other roommates and it was hard to get roommates, but that kept the rent cheap. And I feel like if you're having a four or seven-bedroom house and you're, you're splitting up each rent individually. I, I see that as a way for landlords to charge people more. Um, because they're not trying to rent a four-bedroom house. So, you know, and. Maybe that's, you know. There's another way to look at the renting aspect. If the rooms aren't rented, are you charging everyone? The house rent kind of thing. So I don't really see this as a way to make housing more affordable. I just see it. Painting it a different color.
What about safety too, right? Let's say you're, you know, sure you have the, the room to your, the door to your room, but. I mean, what if the person, and I'm putting all this on the, the renter, because who knows, maybe it's the person that long-term lives here could. Or something, but like, but you know, what if it happens, just, you know, like, there's all kinds of scenarios that can happen and. I kind of think if it was like a hotel's different, a house is different in terms of more security and entering. Just, you know, entering the area, but you know, I could see that, I could see it just turning into a nightmare and then.
I'd rather incentivize someone with a house that's hard to rent, say a four or seven-bedroom house that used to be a church or a school or whatever. And incentivizing them more to split it up into apartments or something like that than to sell each room as an individual unit.
Yeah, the, the, the part that's hard there is.
Right, then you need.
Apartment unit that needs to have its own bathroom.
Exactly.
I mean, a unit, the definition of a unit.
Right.
So we're, we're trying to find ways to allow for more folks to be in a. Permanent housing situation than during, you know, the summer season being in a yurt up in Four Mile.
Yeah, I'd be a hundred percent for this if this was associated with the. You know, an affordable housing, like AMI percentage, but I don't see that being a thing. So.
Go ahead, Libby.
Uh, I, I think a couple of other ways in which this helps people is that. They don't, they probably don't have to sign a whole year lease, you know, for an entire house. I mean, when you got three or four roommates, somebody's on the hook.
Right.
For that whole lease. Um, and so, you know, this, this helps the person who is somewhat transient. Um, or, you know, doesn't have the backing to be able to, to take on a huge lease of their own.
If I, if I might just, I, I just want to reiterate what, what Mark started with, which is that. From the beginning of, of this conversation and all these conversations, they were not explicitly affordability strategies. They were diversity of housing option strategies. I, I just want to make sure that, that um. You're not hearing that this is an affordable housing solution as much as a housing diversity tool. Um, and that was one of the pieces of the complaint, which is diverse housing options. So I think, I just want to make sure that we're, we're not focusing too much on, on this being an affordable housing strategy versus being a diverse housing tool.
To, to follow up on that, right now, we have a hammer and a wrench in our toolbox. We're trying to add a screwdriver. We don't have a screwdriver in our code that allows this.
Like I said, I could be on board with it if.
If they didn't have.
Rentals. I'm not, I'm not anti-single-room occupancy. It's just, I don't believe it's right to tie that in, STRs. You could do that somewhere else, but I don't think this is the right place. So you'd have my whatever. Vote to, to move forward if you would take the short-term rentals off.
But without that being um removed, I will not be on board because I think this is a bad idea for.
We could sit here all night and I'll come up with a very long list for you, but I won't do that, but um, but I think. Or we can talk about more later, I don't care, but I can't in good faith vote, yes, something like this based on the fact that we'd have short-term rentals. Within this single occupancy space.
And, and that topic they took up through our discussions as part of the planning zoning, there was a member of the public and I don't know if they're on or tonight or not, but. We get to the public that there may be some folks that may speak to that. But part of that was to try and figure out a way to. From, from their perspective, I think it was a way to pay for those improvements to get those in. Sooner than over the course of longer term leases.
Or not at all.
Yeah.
Or not at all. Yeah, because if they can't, uh, no matter what, as a, a owner of a facility. If you can't make a profit, you're not going to do it. You're just not going to do it.
You can still make a profit, might just take longer.
You may not make a profit. I mean, it's, it's that simple. You may not make a profit.
Business is business though, right? Those are risks.
Oh, that's what, but that's what they're saying is that's business is business. We won't build it if we can't, if we don't have the opportunity. And that's kind of what they're saying. I can, I can see both sides. I know what you're saying, but as a business owner, I'm going. If I can make X off of two rooms and long-term the rest of them. I'll do that and I can turn a profit. It's, it's, it's different. It just depends how you want to proceed. It really is. Now, this is just number seven, title seven. Right? This, we're looking at sections of title seven, eight and sixteen. Which one are we discussing right now? How many do we have?
This, this is single-room occupancy as a use, which has some changes in seven.
Got you. Okay, so that impacts all of those. Okay.
So if there are any other questions on this topic, I'll be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll move on to the next.
I want to hear the next one.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Could I just say that it sounds like where we stand right now is that three people would be opposed to. Going forward with the short-term rental aspect of it, but maybe if we pulled that out for now. Would those people be agreeable to pursuing it?
You know, I, I. I understand that it's not about affordable housing, it's about diversifying of housing and I, I a hundred percent get that. But I try to see everything through the lens of affordable housing and I don't really see how this. Creates. You know, housing that's affordable for people here. So I, I think I would still have a hard time with it, but. For that section, but that's just me.
Yes.
I would be able to move forward if the STRs are off.
I would hate to live in that situation, but I know that they need diversified housing and. Some people are outgoing enough that it would suit them just fine. I would be in favor of it if they remove the short-term rental part.
Okay, so we can just go on with the rest of it.
Let's, let's move forward. All right, let's get more.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so the next one is, as part of these proposed changes is multifamily allowed in a. Have a commercial or the HC zone district. Right now, uh, multifamily is allowed, but it has to be part of a vertically mixed-use building. So. Billion that has commercial on the ground floor, apartments above or behind, but it's in some. Mixed-use building, not just standalone apartments. Um, so there's the part, sorry, I got to slide that word. Um, so first, oh, 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 this, here's the section in the code, the stuff that shouldn't read straightened through. Says it's part of a vertically mixed-use building. We're looking to modify that language. Except as permitted here in, in the MU MS and HC district, large multifamily dwellings are only permitted as part of a vertically mixed-use buildings. We're not changing MU MS. So this gets into why we have all this other additional language we're adding in. So large multifamily dwellings, that's multifamily buildings that have five or more units. In the HC district are not required to be part of a mixed-use structure if no more than thirty percent of the total units. May be economized for separate ownership of the units. Such restriction shall be a condition, special use permit, so they have to do a special use permit to do it. So it would be reviewed by the planning commission and be imposed as a deed restriction on the entire property or the condominium. So we're again, we're limiting. The amount that may be turned into condominiums because we know we are, we are low on apartments. So we're trying to find ways to incentivize apartment buildings being built. If a portion of those apartments are turned into condominiums. We want to make sure that we're capping the number of condominiums for owners. Um, for large multifamily dwellings in the HC district, if the developer agrees to certain deed restrictions and conditions of the development. The developer will be eligible for some density bonuses or other incentives. So we get into the incentives. The first one in A is. If they're restricted to no more than a hundred twenty percent of AMI area median income. Developers eligible for a density bonus to increase the height of the structure by one additional story. Or a thirty percent reduction in the number of parking spaces. So we're requiring less parking to be built. So we can try and get more apartment units to fit on a site. It's typically one of the greatest constraints of apartments. Is the amount of parking that is required. Second one is if they agree to again that hundred and twenty percent area median income. And allowing pets in all units of a development and a com- maintenance of common pet area. The developer is eligible for density bonus to increase the height and the thirty percent reduction. So. You do two things, you get two different options available. So you can go taller and you can reduce the amount of required part. So those are the two options that we've got. And then we do get in language into dealing with deed restrictions. Shall be approved by the town. So we want to make sure that if you're agreeing to deed restrictions. That we provide that language in our attorney drafts that up. our attorney drafts that up and we review that, make sure that they stay in place to be affordable under that twenty percent AMI. Um, so that's a lot to take in, but I'll open up questions on that that you may have.
Questions?
So additional storage, three-story buildings?
So right now in the highway commercial zone district, it's thirty-five feet. So typically you can get a three-story building in thirty-five feet. If you agree to these things, uh, you can have the ability to get a fourth story.
Oh.
But that's where apartments get, in condominium buildings get complicated because when you get that fourth story, that's when elevators start getting required and those become expensive. So trying to again, get more ability for multifamily housing and giving some incentives for putting that in the highway commercial zone district.
Questions?
So what is a, what is a multifamily large building?
Five units or more. So the definition of large multifamily is five units or more. Small multifamily is four units or less. We have a couple of, of small multifamily apartments in it as part of a, a commercial business operation. So there are, uh, I believe a couple of units above the Brennan Dog Coffee. That building directly, there's four units in there. And then I think there's a couple of other places in town that have like one or two, but we don't necessarily have apartments as standalone because they've always been under the UDC required to be part of a mixed-use building. So we're trying to find ways to get more apartments in town without necessarily being R-three zoning because we're limited on our, our three zoning in town. We do have a good number of highway commercial properties that are either vacant or underdeveloped that maybe we could get some additional housing in those spaces.
Um, the predecessor to the Chaffey Housing Authority was the HPAK, the Housing Policy Advisory Committee. And, um, there were some builders in there who would be willing to build, uh, structures, specifically apartment buildings. But our zoning here in Vina Vista didn't really provide for any places around town where those buildings could be built. Um, so it was our, our code at that time was a problem and, and so, you know, um, I'm all in favor of making these types of changes to, to permit that.
Sorry. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, the only thing that's a little bit of a bummer is if, I guess it stops at four stories, it sounds like it's just part of what's so nice about being here is the views and I'd hate for people that live back maybe behind the highway section. It gets higher, maybe you don't, you know, I like, it is what it is. I get that like, but that's the only thing I'm like, uh, kind of stink if I was living somewhere and something was put up and higher and higher, I'd be a little, a little bummed out about that. I think it's pretty, but it's my only comment.
In.
Four stories is high.
Yeah.
If, if I may, we did receive one letter from, um, Red Jewel on this thing specifically. He is very much supporting that this proposal because he has been looking to develop something, but that commercial component was an element that was causing a little bit of harper. Um, there's, he owns the, I believe it's the Best Western and then there's a big vacant piece of ground behind the Best Western toward the river. So we've had some initial conversations, but with that vertically mixed-use building, then it was, all right, if, if you're going to build some housing, do you have more hotel rooms? Or some other commercial operation as part of that? Because part of his concern is again staffing of, of his businesses.
So I have a question. Um, could you do it by special use? Location, let's say that, um, the Old Willows location. So they put in a massive building there and that's four stories high. It's actually kind of on the edge of town, so it wouldn't be too horrible. Um, but if, um, oh, I'm thinking of what's available. If, if you tore down the, I'm going to call it the DeWalt House. Um, that's next to the car wash and in, on the opposite side, it has tackle store that is small. If they put in a four-story unit there and there isn't anything four-story around it. A few blocks down, you've got one-story places and you have a four-story unit emerged. Would that make our town look ridiculous?
It just looked out of place to me if you go four stories.
Yeah, I, I will say it is, it would, as we have it proposed, it would be a special use permit. So we go to the planning commission for review. And part of the reason why we have those as a special use is to do a case-by-case basis and analysis depending upon the size of the property and where it's located and the amount that's being proposed. Additionally, the other option is the reduction in the parking. It's really, or you could get parking reduced. So we're trying to create an incentive that would get more apartments developed in the highway commercial zone district, subject to a special use permit reviewed by the planning and zoning commission. Because every property is always going to be different depending upon its size and location. So that would be one of the things that would be looked at during the special use permit, which would be a public hearing in front of the planning. They would have, I'm sure those same questions.
I don't think there's any homes behind the Best Western. And I'm not sure how close property is from the road tracks, whatever, da, da, da. I don't know if it would interfere with anybody to have a four-story building there, but, and I don't want it to end up where like if they were going to do it at the, that tackle place is going to go up four stories. It wouldn't look right. It wouldn't fit the surrounding area. It would, it wouldn't look like being a vista if you allow that. And I don't want it to be where when something is presented to us that they meet all the criteria. So I have no choice but to say, yes, I will agree to this because it meets all the criteria. Um, so I don't want it in the code where if it truly does not fit our town, that we do not have a choice. We, that we do have the right to say no without having causing legal problems for the town, I guess. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's a, that's a good submission. Uh, so a couple of points. There is residential behind that property along the highway. It just happens to be in the county. Those are larger lots. County along three seventy-one, what is Colorado Avenue is you could drive north out of town. There are residential properties in the county, but again, they're in the county. So they're not necessarily subject to towns requirements unless they went through some form of annexation. But there are the railroad tracks back there. The railroad tracks are, I believe up in that area is, I believe a hundred foot width. So there is a larger separation due to the actual railroad track right away. And, and the special use permit is the, that mechanism. And there are criteria that we look at and one of the things is how does it work with comprehensive plan? And the other elements of a special use permit that, that, that is a grayer area for basis of a decision for approval or denial of that special use. It is something that staff would review and make a recommendation as well. So how well a particular structure fits in, whether it's on a really small property or a really large property or the property that's really close to residential or a property that's not close to residential. We're trying to create one more option in the highway commercial zone district, um, available for apartment construction. Any other questions on this one before I move forward?
Well, to Cindy's point with the one section, I mean, I mean, it's so let's say something came up and we didn't like it. Could we utilize the criteria? So it would not result in significantly adverse impacts to natural environment, including your, well, I guess it's quality vegetation, other natural features of the town. Could that fall into that bucket as a out, if you will?
Um, so Olivia, yeah, let me be very clear. Right now, um, in our code, special use permits go to planning and zoning that do not come before the board. So it would be a decision that the planning zone commission would wrestle with. You, there can always be an appeal of a special use permit that comes to the board. So an appeal of an approval or appeal for denial. But the board doesn't, based upon our code, doesn't, no longer sees special use permits.
Gotcha.
So it would be the planning and zoning commission being tasked with making that decision.
Gotcha. Okay.
So we wouldn't even know.
Things to think about.
One other, just quick clarification to that. The minimum threshold to allow a standalone apartment building under this change is simply the requirement that they commit to no more than thirty percent of those units being deal with condominiums. It's only when we start talking about affordability deed restrictions, that they're eligible for either height additions or parking reductions. So they're kind of, if they want to do a standalone apartment building, there's the, there's the restriction on condominiums as the minimum threshold. Then if they want to commit to a fourth story, then they may be eligible for these, one of these two bonuses. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that just because they pursue a standalone apartment building doesn't mean they're also pursuing four stories necessarily. That would be very much on, on a case-by-case basis if they're.
Even the motels in this town are two stories high. So third story to me is a stretch. Four story is hard for me to comprehend. But I was raised in a one-stoplight town, realizing it's not one-stop-light anymore. Um, but four stories is a true stretch for our skyline, for how we talk about our beautiful views and I just don't see a four-story building.
I think the thing that we all need to look at too is what are your options for housing? What do you? The town is going to have to, if that's the direction we want, if we want to grow that way. Worker, housing for workers, things like that. You're going to have to have apartments. It's the only way they can afford it.
But not necessarily four stories.
That's, that's a, and, and obviously the four stories go with restrictions. Very restricted. Need restrictions, everything. But that's a concept that you will have to grasp and hold on to is what, these are options that are being brought forward for housing. How do we get more housing? In other words, you're okay, so a half a million dollars. Or you live in an apartment and there's people in areas that never even think about buying a house. They live in an apartment all the time. Those are the options that very possibly you have to grasp and think about. Is that the direction? Is that the direction you want to go? And that's a decision you're making here tonight, obviously.
Is that a separate conversation? You, you said if, what did you just say?
If that's the direction that we want to go.
That's well, but see that's, that is this decision you're making right now is that decision. Is that the direction you're, is that a step you're willing to take?
That's a big conversation.
Yeah.
It is, but that's the decision that's in front of you right now.
And I think that these are examples, not to say that, that you have to pass the.
Right.
This is, and example of, um, if, if we want more workforce housing, we have to have density. There, there is no other alternative.
No other alternative.
Now, do we need four stories? Maybe not. So, so, so there's degrees of density, but, but we cannot pursue workforce housing as a town without meaningful density, which is different than what we've had in the past. So I just want to make sure that we are grounded. If that's the direction that you all want to take, that take housing is towards workforce housing, that will mean we need.
And that's what Libby basically said. There were people willing to build, but our code restricted and wouldn't allow it. And so by this change would allow that and those people would think about building.
So how high is the fading west factory building? Is, that would be pretty equivalent to?
That is a fifty-foot tall building.
Okay.
How high is collegiate commons?
Collegiate commons is a good question. I believe it's like forty-one feet.
Yeah, and that's.
That's a four-story apartment building with a fish row.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't think, um, this is an assumption. I think a lot of people here want to have more options for housing and want to see more things built. I don't think that's so much like the, the problem or the issue. I think it's just voting on some of the stuff that's presented tonight puts us in a boat of, well, I don't know if all those things sound great. We like some of it, but not all of it. But to just say, hey, yeah, let's move forward and then leave it up to fate later on, depending what, you know, comes up or what developer says, hey, well, I'll do this. If you do this for me. I feel like we're under their thumb. I don't like that. Like personally, I kind of think we should be in charge of that. We're, we're town. Um, I understand very much that we need developers to also make homes for people that live here, but I definitely don't want to change our code based off of a developer saying, well, I'll promise this, you do that.
Well, I understand that this wasn't brought forward by developers. This was P and Z. This is the code change. And if you read basically this one, just basically says low hanging fruit. This is, this is the easy fix for a specific problem. This one. Then this one is, well, if we do this, guess what? We can get more density and more housing here. And I, you've got more, it's, it's options, I guess, best way to put it. And right now our code doesn't allow options. And, and that's shooting us right now. It's shooting us. So, okay, how do we get more workforce housing density? Because our code doesn't allow it. Mark?
So you bring up a very good point. Right now, multifamily, large multifamily is only allowed in very limited area of town. So it's allowed in our, some of our mixed-use districts and it's allowed in the R-three zone district. Currently in town, there are only three properties that are zoned R-three. There's the farm, which is predominantly single-family town, townhomes, but there will be apartments that the board approved as part of that rezoning. To the east of that is some condominiums that used to be apartments called Antero condominiums. These were, where I think a lot of our, um, prison guards lived when it was apartments, but those have been turned into condominiums. There are, there is some vacant land on that property for additional units and we've been having some of those conversations. The other property, um, there are two other properties in town. One is the old Adobi Village, now Princeton View. Which was apartments, but now is condominiums and that's thirty-two units over there on the south side of Cedar, directly across from us. And then the last place that is owned R-three is Tri Vista and that's being developed with tri-ops. We have no other R-three zoning. So if someone were to pursue building an apartment in town, if they're not in those areas, they would have to propose an R-three zoning that would come to the board for a decision. And so that zoning process has a lot of variables and vulnerabilities because every time you have a proposal for rezoning, you may have significant opposition. So I'm just saying that we are very limited on our, our. So I'm just saying that we are very limited on our R three in town, we also have the mixed use. Uh, Main Street and Mixies two, Clearwater Commons is Mixies two.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was gonna say that, that the people I'm talking about who would be up here, ready to build an apartment building. They're not big developers, they're small builders, you know, using local people to do the work and. But they just can't find the land, there is no land.
And that's just what Mark was reentering there is there's no place, there's just no place.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of, you know, we're talking about like height restrictions on hypothetical buildings that. We don't know where, where they would be, you know, and. Obviously, there'll be a lot of, you know. People will have to rezone if they want to have an R three and build a four story, so then it's, it's going to become. Before P and Z and the board, and. It'll be especially use permanent if they want to build a four story building, so that's another hoop they gotta go over, so.
Yeah, just a clarification, the R three is limited to thirty five, so thirty five is more than likely gonna limit it to three.
Right, yeah, it's not like there's gonna be a four story or three story building popping up without us knowing about it, without it. Going down the line, um, so I see this as a, a note for a great way to bring housing here. This is, and it, especially affordable housing, which I was just speaking about, this is a. A specific incentive for builders to build affordable housing, I don't see why this would. Why you'd be against it, it'd be ten or twelve feet higher theoretically at some hypothetical place. Probably on the highway. Maybe somewhere else, I don't know, so.
You have an section, Mark, that you need to. I, I, yes, I have, so I have. Also will remind, you know, in case there's. Give them an opportunity to speak on any of these again.
I don't, this isn't a public hearing though, am I correct?
That's correct.
That is correct. No, it is not.
I'm sorry.
I find it useful to look at the zoning map, you can pull that up off the county, off the city website.
Yes, so I, I actually have it in here, this particular, so this is another fairly.
Keep moving.
Meaty discussion point, this is opposing, so we had a new use. A modification of uses in a new, in an existing zone district, now we're proposing a new single family zone district. Called Small Lot Residential or the R one five zone district. So again, this is the zoning map, since we are proposing this, we are not proposing to rezone any property to. R one five, we're proposing a new set of rules that someone would have to ask to rezone to. So we are not proposing any specific location anywhere in town, we're just giving one more option. So that someone might choose to pursue. So. This is the zoning map of town, highway commercials along the highway, there's a little section down by. Um, uh, the Parlor Rockets Clinic, but. By and large, as you can see in town, we have a good amount of R one and R two properties in town. Problem with R one and R two is the minimum lot sizes is something that tends to. Add to the costs of construction because there are minimum widths of properties of minimum size of those lots. And as we've seen in the last couple of years, we have had. Single family homes going on lots smaller than those in downtown, in our mixed use Main Street, in our. Our one, our two OT zone district. So we are proposing a new single family residential that's here called Small Lot, R one point five. It, we are intending to get smaller lots so that we can get more lots along a piece of infrastructure to reduce the costs. If you have to put in a new water line, if you have six, six hundred and fifty foot long pipe. If in the R one, you can only get ten ounces on each side of that pipe. By reducing down to thirty five, you can get more homes along that same stretch of pipe, so theory. Lot prices are, are, there's more lots, so you're losing the amount of cost per lot. Of that same piece of infrastructure, whether it's road, water pipe, sewer pipe, whatever. So we are intending this to be for single family detached dwellings. And uh, primarily detached dwellings to increase affordability with higher residential densities, but again, single family. Where other multi-family uses may not be desired due to the density setbacks, building heights allowed in others on this. It's intended to provide for affordable, long-term formal ownership opportunities by a dedication of a portion of those lots if. Someone per, pursues this being dedicated to town. Or town designated authority. Um, the R one five should have connected streets, active front yards without garages except for absolutely necessary. And should concentrate parking to the rear of lots of budding alleys and provide accessibility and public use of such parks, open space in the schools. New development shall match the overall development pattern of existing single family subdivisions, predominantly without alleys in our town. R one, there's not a lot with alleys, but there are some, by matching the lot configurations. And the setbacks at the exterior boundary of the subdivision, so by lot configuration. If an adjoining subdivision that exists has a rear of a lot. On the exterior of that boundary, you're putting the rear of the lot there. If there's a side property, because there's a road going through, you're matching that with a side of a proposal. So we're matching those configurations and we're matching the. Um, um, configurations and we're also in. Creating the ability to get subdivisions where we can get alleys in there to serve. As the access, and when you have an alley in town, at most alleys are twenty feet. So you're getting additional twenty feet if you put an alley and a budding, a single family subdivision that doesn't necessarily have an alley. So that's, that's the intent, um, there is a provision in here. That the R one and a half zone district is only available for parcels which are minimum of five acres, so we don't want. Someone going into the middle of this existing subdivision, zoning property and abolishing houses, we now, we want. Large pieces of ground that haven't been subdivided, and, and we are not allowing it to be. Have the old town overlay to further reduce the lot size, thirty five is the minimum lot size that we're looking for.
So the restrictions are five acres. Okay, and it cannot be in Old Town.
It, it can have gone through a previous subdivision.
Right, yeah, it couldn't have gone through that process.
So your large parcels of, of ground that are either vacant or underdeveloped, like you may have one house on ten acres.
Gotcha, okay.
But it hasn't gone through a subdivision.
Now, when I look at the, the map, and I can blow it up here, I see.
Screen here.
Okay, um, let's take the lower section, lower left, yellow is an R two.
Oh, R two, yeah.
Okay, that would be.
That would be eligible.
That would be eligible.
For asking for a reason.
Asking for a rezone, and then, and those are the areas that we're looking at in that respect, it would be something similar to that.
Larger pieces of ground, so that's a good example, um, there's thirty five acres down south of Sunset Vista.
There's actually one over to the right, uh, right off of Cottonwood Creek, another R two. It's a big section.
Um, there's a piece of ground at the end of, uh, South San Grito Cristo.
Okay.
There's a piece of ground over off of Marquette, there's a piece of ground off Arizona. Those are the larger properties, to give you an idea, this property up here where we saw the boulders a couple of years ago.
Yes.
That is five acres, so that square is about a five acre square.
So that's a possibility also.
Potential.
Okay, got you.
But again, they would have to ask for rezoning, rezonings go to. Planning Commission and then come to the board. Before they start developing their plans.
Right, okay.
So basically just denser than one, less dense than two, right?
Say that again.
It's in between R one and R two.
Well, I'll, I'll get into that, uh, the specifics of that. The middle lot area in there right now, as we have proposed, is fifty five hundred square feet, which is the minimum lot size for R two. So if you don't want to do anything else, you can go down to fifty five hundred. If you want to get to that thirty five number, thirty five hundred number, thirty five foot wide, there are some things that you have to do. So these are the conditions that we're talking about, so you have to provide alleys. So you're getting your cars and your garages off of alleys for at least ninety percent of lots, there might be a situation where. We have a creek or something, or some physical constraint where you can't necessarily get. An alley there, so we, we are giving a provision to have the ability for some, but not the majority of lots to have an alley. This really gets into the art of designing a subdivision. Then parks, we are, um, reducing our requirement for parks to be. Calculated on the number of lots. Not dedicated town, so there's a provision in here for a little dedicated portion of these lots to town for affordable housing. So I'll get more into that specifically, but the amount of area that you're designing for. You're not incorporating those units in the size of the park because the size of the park is based upon the number of units. Um, so we're giving an incentive there. Um, and this is where we get into the big incentive that we got, which is a minimum of thirty percent of the difference of the maximum number of lots. permitted in the R one. And the maximum number permitted in the R one and a half. If thirty, a minimum of thirty percent of those are dedicated to the town. Then we will go down to that thirty five hundred square feet. So in here is an example for, this is strictly for illustration purposes to try and explain. So if a piece of property would allow for a hundred lots in the R one district at sixty five hundred square feet. And if it, under the R one and a half. It would allow for a hundred and seventy nine lots because you get more lots in there because they're smaller. Twenty four of those lots being dedicated to town, so the town can figure out what to do with affordable housing. Either, either town as its entity or working with Chase County Housing Authority. We develop a plan for those twenty four lots that the town receives. Then the developer can build the other hundred and fifty five of those hundred and seventy nine, so they're getting fifty five more lots. And that's just for purposes to show the math.
Right.
So if you are dedicating a portion of those lots to town so that we can pursue affordable housing. Then you can build more than what you would under the R one.
And it's still not at the old town even, because those are twenty five by a hundred.
Correct, right, so they have to be a minimum of thirty five.
Thirty five, okay.
Uh, and then we gave ourselves the ability for another option, if someone else proposes something else that gets the town a minimum of thirty percent of the. Proposed lots to be designated for for, so. We gave ourselves a, we don't know everything, someone has some great grand idea, where we still get a minimum of thirty percent of those lots. So those are the, the caveats to that, and now this is where we get into the specific. This is way too small for anyone. So it is in the planning commission, so these green areas are areas where we have changes, and so the blue column is the R one. And the pinkish, orangish, I don't know color line, column is the R one and a half, and I'll explain this. So in the R one, you have to have a minimum lot size of sixty five hundred square feet, sixty five feet wide. In the R one and a half, it's fifty five hundred, if you want to get down to thirty five hundred, you're dedicating lots to town. Um, you, the minimum lot width is fifty five and it reduces down to thirty five if you're dedicating lots to town. Um, we are matching setbacks for the most part, we are reducing setbacks. On the front because we don't want driveways on the front, we're trying to bring houses closer. To the street because we're hopefully getting parking at the rear of the lots, but in the. Um, so, uh. The side setback is still the same as the R one, five feet minimum, so when you have a lot abutting another property that's already built, same setback as that. R one. Um, that's what these blue areas are, um, they, that's where they're the same. The rear setback is zero if you're abutting an alley, but you remember an alley is twenty foot wide. Whereas the R one, it doesn't have an alley, is fifteen feet, so the R one is allowed to be fifteen feet. To the back fence line, whereas these properties, we are allowing. Like detached garages and whatnot in the back to be zero abutting the alley, but that's still twenty feet away from the existing fence. Um, and then the rear setback for accessory structures is still the same. Um, primary height is another element, we want to match. The existing R one, we're keeping it at thirty feet, the R one is a maximum thirty feet, R two and R three are thirty five. And accessory structures is twenty five, so we're still keeping the same height as the R one, but we're trying to get more houses. In a particular area, but keeping it the same height, getting the same setbacks with the exception of that alley. If we have an alley abutting it, that's twenty feet of opens. Uh, that's what this represents. So, and we are also being very cognitive that we are not allowing. Multi-family uses in some districts, so the R one, we're matching. By and large, with the exception of these areas, single family detached dwelling, we're now creating that. Um, we're creating the ability to bring houses together. On a common property line, so what most people call duplex. Where it's one unit on a lot next to one unit on a lot, but they're stuck together. So it's still a single family use, but there is a common lot line between them. So we are allowing that, but we are not allowing a duplex deal, the new fang duplexes where there's two units. On one piece of property, that's not allowed. We're allowing two next to each other when they're on their own property, it's common property line between. And we are not allowing small multi-family dwellings like the R one allows with special use. Our intention is strictly small, single family homes. Um, and then. Um, a typo that staff had in the planning commission, I'm bringing to your attention because we did make this change when we prepared this for the board. We accidentally listed temporary seasonal camping as a, a permitted use, we've taken that out. And I'm highlighting that, that we caught that, that was not our intent to create that. In residential zone district because it's not allowed in, in the other residential zone, that's for. Seasonal camping in the industrial parks, particularly that's rafter, rafter seasonal camp. So. Questions there, that's a lot to take in because that's, the intent really here is to try and get. Smaller lot sizes for single family homes and keep them at the same height and setbacks primarily. As other existing subdivisions.
Does that, so meaning no more than one unit, does that mean like you couldn't have an ADU?
You still can have an ADU.
Okay.
Are allowed in all residential districts.
Okay, and, uh, so the R one and a half, you would. In order to get that, you would have to have that affordable housing and give that to town, that's the only way you could do it?
You can have R one and a half, but the minimum lot size is fifty five hundred, you can certainly ask for that. And have fifty five hundred and.
But if they want the thirty five hundred.
If you want to get to those smaller lots. And get that, those incentives that we're offering, you have to dedicate at least thirty percent of those. To town for purposes of affordable.
Okay, so yeah, so you can keep it R one and a half, you just can't make them that small, which means you wouldn't get as many lots out of it.
And to highlight, the R two zone district is a minimum lot size of fifty five hundred.
Cool, good job, Mark, it's a lot of stuff.
Problems aren't gonna get any easier, and so we have to get creative, and so this is. Again, the ability to create another tool because we don't have a tool other than our old town lots in downtown to get narrower lots.
Yeah, I had flashbacks to UDC time.
And then the other provision is we are not. And then the other provision is we are not zoning any of this property. So someone's still gonna have to come forward with a proposal.
Right.
And that would come to this board.
I think it's, I think it's great anyway to give people incentive, incentive to give us land to. Create affordable housing. I think that's awesome. So.
All this with the, I mean, I guess it kind of branched off of what you said earlier with the water. I guess that studies in the. And I know we kind of little. Talk about that, but. I mean, if all these things are filled up, I assume our current water rates could not. Handle this.
Yeah, even if, even if this wasn't implemented, R one point five was approved and somebody came, but even if we didn't ever get R one point five, we couldn't service all of our.
That's why this guy back here. Keep in mind first come, first served.
That's best way to put it. Yeah, that is the best way to put it. Who comes to the table first and gets.
To have it get available if we have the water for it.
I mean, I'd be curious and. I understand the. Speed to keep this going, but just to see what happens on. February eighth with the study. Maybe before moving forward with this, just to. Just to have a better. On what is coming down the pipe and if we could potentially. You know, I don't know. It's just me maybe being a worrywart, but it's my job to think about that part. So.
And it won't change a thing.
What's more information?
Well, it's more information, but we, Joseph just said, we don't have enough water to satisfy everything that's out there anyway. It's first come, first served. So essentially what you're doing. What we are doing or proposing, what, what, what's being proposed is to allow for more density on the infrastructure we have. Is what we're looking for. It costs us less money as a town. It's less to maintain. It's less to take care of. Um, and so therefore it's easier, easier. To build. Still, go ahead. Maybe to look at the inverse way too. Um, if you were to pass, um, these tools or options tonight. When we do have discussions about. How you want to utilize the water that we do have. These tools that are available to talk about as options for how to utilize that water. Versus if we don't have these tools, then our, the ability for us to direct, Philip has mentioned. Direct our usage of that water for, for housing strategies or diversizing strategies, whatever is more of an, because we don't have this option. But I think there's, you know.
No, that makes sense.
Different ways to look at it.
Right, right.
Different ways to look at. It's, it's, and it's really, I, I guess the thing that. It's kind of hard to grasp is the fact that. The available land and the lots that we have, we don't have water pool. Period. Isn't the best way to put it? So it's first come, first served. So it doesn't matter whether this proposal right now is passed or not. Whatever comes forward, whoever gets through the. The end game in fifteen, twenty years, got the water and the guy that's. Twenty-one years, don't.
Does that mean that the guy that doesn't, he's just out of luck in building? So there's no home.
Pretty much.
Okay.
Yeah, if you ain't got water, you can't build a home.
Even if our zoning says, hey, you could build here, but.
That could, and, and to, to put it bluntly, that could be Sunset Four, that could be the farm, that could be South Main. May not get water. It's that, I hate to put it bluntly like that, but that's realistically, that's the way it is. Whoever gets to the. The bucket first gets the water.
I had a question. If the carbon industry. Goes through, how much wat- do we have any vague idea how much water that would? Take in?
The current, uh. The current proposals are for about sixty-five housing units, which considering the level of multifamily being considered. Maybe fifty to fifty-five SFEs.
Fifty, fifty SFEs, I would say.
It really depends upon the configuration that this, the town finally decides.
Right.
Yeah, but just ballpark. We're looking at fifty?
Yeah.
Give or take? Okay.
Yeah. And, and, and part of that, and let's go with the apartment buildings too. You aren't water in lungs.
Right, sure.
So that. Lessens the use of water, if you want to put it that way. You know, it's going out the tap, but it's not going on the ground. There's different ways to look at all of that in that respect. The same with. The rooms and, and we already kind of touched on that. The house I was in had five, five rooms. Well, that's what it was allotted to. I could have rented each room individually, wouldn't have changed the estimated water usage of that house. It, it's, there's just different ways to address things and look at things. It's, it's interesting.
See the least.
Yeah, it really is. Other questions?
All right, well, one more.
Gotcha.
That was the main course. Now we got dessert.
Now he's gonna throw one more shovel on the grill.
So.
A little more dirt.
This will be the end of staff presentation, then hopefully I'll just let them speak and then any other questions can be created. This one is a fairly small one. Small multifamily, again, organs or less is allowed with a building. All infrastructures in place. If we have water pipes in the ground, roads. Already paved, those kind of things where we have a site ready to build. They don't have to put in public infrastructure in order to do that. We are, so we have in our code currently, if you want to get a building permit and you have a, the appropriate. Lot is ready for it, has the infrastructure in place, roads and waters. Or in front of, in the street in front of it. You can get a building permit, you can go build a single family house. That is not required to go through our formal site plan process. We have a few exemptions. Single family home is one of those. If you are changing a use. Building. So if you're taking a commercial restaurant and you're turning it into an office building, you're not doing any additions. You're converting a use, but you're not changing the space of that use. You don't need to go through a site. Those are some of the exceptions. We are proposing another exemption. That if a small multifamily dwelling does not require installation of new public improvements, other. So streets, alleys, sidewalks, like, so. If it's a dirt piece of ground and we have to get that road graded and we have to put in a water pipe, we have to put in a sewer pipe. We'll have to go through that site point process. If they're already there and they're already capable of supporting a small multifamily or unit or less apartment building. So we have a couple of those in town that have been built recently. There's one on the corner, Golden Bell. And now there's one on the corner of Pine and Evans, the dirt road just north of College Con. There are two. Small multifamily development. This provision would allow those to be built if that infrastructure was there. That, that's the big caveat of putting out there. Those two. Components, ones that got built would still require a site plan because. These need streets and water to do it. The water line in Pine Street that South Main put in. Is what delayed the construction of that building at Pine and Evans. Because we needed to get that water line built, inspected and accepted. So that would still go through the site plan process because it's privileged raw ground. So we have to get roads right. We have to get the water. Pipe depth, those kind of things. The engineer needs to design that. But if it's somewhere else in town, the streets are already in, the sewer lines are already in, the water lines are already in. You can go straight to a building permit, but we will do that review without doing the site. So site plans take time. We're trying to do that. That does not mean that you still have to meet all the requirements. Of that, we will review that as part of a building permit review. And we will have to. Update our requirements for a small multifamily if this is the case. So we're gonna ask for more information. As part of a building. Make sure that it's meeting the town's requirements. But you don't have to go through that site plan process, which is longer than a building permit review. More time, more money.
What zoning is required to do this?
It's, it's not zoning. So small multifamily is allowed in several zone districts. So for example, the MU two in. Size Main Street. Um, on the East Main, you sent me to, you could in, build a small multifamily in there. If the infrastructure's in place. It would be a building permit. If the infrastructure's not there, like. For example, Evan Street. We do not have a street. We do not have a water line. We do not have a sewer line. That would still require our site plan where we would have to go get those public improvements. If the stuff is already there, for example, a. Property on Pining Street somewhere where we have a water line, where we have a sewer line, where we have the road, then they could get a building. Currently, you have to go through a site plan for anything other than a single family home or duplex. In terms of residential. So we're trying to make the rules a little bit easier for one specific thing, which is a three or four unit build.
But you can't build it in R one.
You cannot build, well, in small multifamily. It's a special use permit, but again, it. We would evaluate and would go to the planning and zoning commission. So. That special use permit, we're still gonna be asking for the details of that development. But it would not be in the proposed R one and a half.
Gotcha. So the more I hear this. Whole concept. It's trying, the, the. The potential is to put more units. Available. Simpler. And easier. And that's going from the SROs, right down each one of them that you have explained to us at this point. It's making. The potential for more units to be put on the ground. Quicker, simpler.
That's our goal. And again, as I said prior to starting this, I can't control the price of concrete or lumber. I can control the town's. Regulations that we as a town decide. This is what the planning department does whenever used construction.
And I can remember a meeting. It was probably six, eight years ago. And it was a. It was a work session. And all the contractors were sitting here and we're sitting over here and they asked the town, what can you do? What are you gonna do for us? That was their question. They wanted us to waive fees. They wanted us to. And I was rather irritated because it was like they weren't gonna lower their. Cost per square foot. They weren't gonna, realtors weren't gonna drop their percentage. They weren't gonna do anything. This is one way that I see we're helping them to be able to accomplish. What we need. Now, it's still up to them to be able to do this or to be willing to do this, like the ones you were talking about. It's still not us. But we're now opening that door and saying, here, we give you the opportunity to build more. We're gonna let you do a hundred and fifty instead of a hundred. Now we're gonna ask for some concessions. We want thirty of them, but you can do one fifty now. So you can do a hundred and fifty homes instead of a hundred, which means your return on investment is gonna be better. On that piece of property. I mean, it's, those are the kind of things that I think they were wanting to hear from us, but. At that point in time, there were no, these things weren't thought of. It wasn't a concern. I mean, that long ago, it wasn't a concern. We were, it was just stuff.
Yeah, and our current zoning reflects that the majority of residential zoning in town is R one.
Yeah.
There is very little R three available.
Yeah, the options weren't there. Now we're, uh, putting on the thinking cap and go, what can we do? What can we do now?
Correct. We are, so there's the analogy of, you know, getting a. A mule to move. You either have the carrot hanging out front or you use the stick. On the behind. So is it the stick or the carrot? We're trying to create more ways to have carrots. As I was saying, you shall build affordable housing using a stick that all we will.
Yeah.
So.
Now, looking at the, looking at the, the SRO one, um, now when you say they are non-conforming use, what? What are we saying when we say that?
So.
That there's.
So there, there's a couple that we know that exist.
Okay.
But we don't have a. A. A hole for that peg. We have tried to put a.
So they're not allowed by use. We're saying they're non-conforming. So. What is our recourse? We can shut them down or not?
Well, again, that, that's a whole other.
Where do you want to go? Where do you want to go? Okay, thank you. That, that's all I, that's what I wanted to hear was, okay, now what? Cause that's the next step. If you don't do one, you're gonna end up doing the other because if. You set a precedent, if you want to put it that way.
And then you don't get your pizza.
Don't get your pizza.
But wouldn't. We just want to have more concessions. Like the SRO, taking away the, the STR part, that would be concession to me. It's not saying we don't want an SRO. We don't want the STRs to go along with it.
And then people might not want to do it. They may not want to build it, but some might want to build it.
We wanted to open this up, Philip, for public comment.
Yes.
Let's do, uh, even, even though it wasn't listed as a public hearing, we want to go ahead and open it up for public comment. So. We're gonna open up the public comment. Jeff, what do you got?
Oh, just kidding.
It's a comp, it's complicated issue and mostly this is all policy matters, frankly. Um, you know, we can draft it as you, you all decides appropriate, but this is mostly policy issues that work best for the town. So. I don't have a lot of legal comments, but.
Obviously, it's all been looked at in the respect that it's all legal. Uh, what we present is legal. Obviously, there's other hurdles that will have to be crossed if we don't. Do certain things, but that's neither here nor there at this point. Um, Philip, you got anybody? Are we looking for anybody that wants to make public comment?
Yes.
Please raise your hand if you would like to make public comment.
Can you make me a paddle ass?
Uh, star nine, if you're on your cell phone. And just for the record too, this was noticed as a public hearing?
Oh, it was. Yes, it just didn't get put this way. Okay.
Um, yeah.
Then, then we're all, that's right, that's right, good. Yeah, I didn't say it here. And when he said public, I'm going, no, I don't think so.
Yeah, we did put it on the paper.
Good, okay.
I don't see. I don't see any hands. I don't see anything at this point. Okay, I close this portion of the public hearing for public comment. I mean, obviously there's, there's, um, concerns. I'll just put it that way. We could entertain a motion and, uh, try to pursue a vote on this. We could entertain a motion to. Uh, Jeff, we could continue this to. Another date. We could. But. Option, we've got options, obviously.
The options, maybe. It, there's just an awful lot to unpack. It's, it's brilliant. Some of it. I don't know that I agree with. Some of it actually might not have made sense to me. Is there a reason that it was all chosen to be one ordinance? Can we, can we? Would we be able to take, tackle one topic at a time and then maybe come back to one ordinance? But it just seems. From Friday to Tuesday, that's, that was, I know that you guys have been working on it for months and months and months and we've heard about it. But man, that was, that's a lot.
And, and I'll, I'll jump in there because I, the. The idea was to hear them all in the same meeting. And so then therefore, that was my idea. It made more sense to combine them in a single ordinance. So we weren't passing both. While pertaining to the.
Pertaining to the same thing.
Yeah, so no, by no means do we have to pass it as one ordinance for, you know. Uh, say no to all of it. Um, we take your direction. Um, I, I definitely would be interested in. Is that, okay, so, so let's, let's look at it that way. Do we want staff to bring it back? Individually? For discussion. Continue it to, uh. A future date. If there's two specific changes made of not allowing a fourth story and then no STRs, would we bring it back as one? I mean, I think, you know. Okay, okay. Uh, if that's, there again, let's, let's keep it moving in that process is that. But what do I need here? A, a motion to.
From Mayor. I would.
Go ahead.
I would think that maybe directing staff to split them into individual topics. And potentially continue them to debate certain, so that we can prepare to come back to the board and have several different conversations if we need to. Because if one is not necessarily ready, we could hear the other three if they are ready. And that way, if there's more work that staff is directed to do, we can do that work individually. We, as an example, these were all individual cases that were held on different meetings before the planning commission. So we will do whatever the board directs us to do. But if you want more information on one particular topic, but you're more comfortable with it, I don't, maybe separated them out might make sense.
I'd entertain a motion to continue this to date specific. Would, would next meeting be too too soon?
But I mean, to me, it depends on your direction.
Okay.
A wholesale reader than that.
The. From what I'm hearing, the two questions are is STR.
With the SRO.
With the SRO.
Use.
And then the height.
Of the multifamily as an incentive for highway commercial.
Right. Is, is that? Am I hearing right? I, I, I think there could be more discussion on the height only because of the deed restriction and stuff like that when it comes to the four and that, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I think that that kind of will handle itself. It didn't seem like there was a lot of, and I'm speaking maybe way out of turn. I went Cindy. STR, SRO. Quick.
Oh, too many abbreviations. I do not want STRs and the SROs.
Hey, Dave.
I, I see why they would need to be there. I'm not necessarily opposed to that.
You were a no.
Yeah, you guys know already.
I'm a Dave.
Okay.
I'm a no on SROs. I think it's beneficial to landlords and not beneficial to renters. Right?
So no on the SROs, are what you're saying completely?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be another can of worms.
Yeah.
So just cut that out, that part.
I, I, I leave that to you all. I mean, if one of you doesn't want them, but the rest, I, I leave that to you all.
But you're going to have to, you will, yeah, that's.
I think it worth merits its own topic.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, that one's going to have to have further discussion because it's going to bring up other conversation. Just the fact if you're going to do that. Okay. So then we go to the only other one that seemed to be a concern really was the four, four story at this point. And, and that one is totally deed restricted if it's four. If it's three, it's not. If you're asking for less parking, four story, if you're asking for less for parking, four story, less parking, deed restricted, that's major.
Yeah. It is an incentive that we have proposed.
Right.
So we can certainly revisit that incentive.
When, those are the only two items I hear. Am I correct?
Would, would it be, would it be acceptable to bring back the small multifamily site planning section, R1.5?
Yes.
Like sooner, maybe, and then unbundle the other two, but bring them back at maybe a different time.
So there were actually four. So we're going to bring back the 1.5.
The small multifamily.
Small multifamily. That could be date specific next meeting, correct?
Is that word for you guys?
Okay. Then the other two, you want to massage and work on them? I mean, what are the thoughts, board? Do we want to entertain more information? What do we want on those?
I'd like to see them come up on February 22nd.
So the next meet, the
The following.
The following meeting. Was that enough time?
Staff will do what the board directs us to do.
Let's, let's do that. Because I'd like to get it out of the way. I think it needs to be taken care of. I mean, obviously, it's putting units available is really the way I have to look at it. After, it's putting units available. So I would entertain a motion for that date specific for the two items. 1.5 and mo- small multifamily, multi-use, multifamily.
February.
During eight.
Eight. And then date specific, 22nd for the
Highway Commercial.
And the
Single Revival.
And the SRO. I'd entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second, Lucrezi, further discussion?
Can we order a pizza in February if we're doing water and that?
You've got the work session at 5:30. Work sessions at 5:30.
Easier topics?
The small multifamily and the 1.5.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that will be.
Yeah. Those are, and the work sessions at 5:30.
Yeah.
It's not the regular meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Get out of bed. What can I say?
Then there will be pizza or something.
We'll call vote, please.
Yeah, there'll be dinner.
Just asking.
Rusty Fay.
Yes.
Rusty Lucrezi.
Yes.
Rusty Nyberg.
Yes.
Rusty Row.
Yes.
Rusty Switzer.
Yes.
Rusty Wuppy.
Yes.
Okay, we'll look for those.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I know that's a lot to throw at you, but I kind of want to let you know we've been working on some things.
You've done a great job.
No, no worries. Sorry, I took till 10.
Philip.
My apologies to the rest of the staff that had to sit.
And Philip will. No worries. Next item on the agenda.
Let me take a break, please.
Sure.
Sorry, Mayor. I know I probably am speaking for more than just myself in three hours, so.
Uh, yeah, five minutes. So it'll be 10:01.
We're done with B. The line, the line.
There we go.
Pitch forward, there it is.
Okay, we're back in order. Item C, property addressing ordinance. Should the Board of Trustees proven adoption ordinance number two, series 2022, and I'll, and ordinance amending section 11 dash 42 of municipal municipal code concerning the numbering of buildings.
Park again. Actually, I will turn this over to Joseph, but I will.
Really?
Learn some part. Given that I that relates to this. So I, I, I appreciate the attention.
But it is Joseph.
Yeah, mine. It is me.
Yeah.
This is going to be much more mundane and, but much more utilitarian than our previous UDC amendment discussion. So what's before you is a consideration to amend section 1142 of municipal code, which deals with how we assign addresses to properties, buildings, et cetera. Essentially, over, over the years, the current way that the code, we'll get into in a second, has led to one, the season, the way that we are addressing, like ADUs or other types of structures. And then two, it has led to various instances where if a block is unbuilt or undeveloped, except for maybe the furthest building, that first building may have a address in the thirties. And yet, when the infill starts to happen above it, so to speak, the addressing, you might have 20 lots that could be built. And that creates the inability to address those in sequence because that end building is addressed in the thirties. So prime example, this is the apartment building across many persons. That's 531 East Main Street. There are many other lots before it that are going to be very challenging to address. Because you would have numbers that would go above 530, that they would come before 530. So that's a, a really brief example of some of the challenges that the current structure presents to staff as we look at assigning addresses. So in the staff report on page 128 and 129, I, I put forward the current code with a couple of color-coded markups, red being language that we're proposing to strike, would be language that we're proposing to add. So if we go to page 129, happy to run through every, every detail, but essentially where the changes are in section one, asking for a bit more discretion for staff. As well as time, the addressing to parts of the plan versus a linear feat of measurement. We scroll down. You can see sections two and three, there are no proposed changes. Those deal with setting Main Street and Highway 24 is the origin points for addresses. We're proposing to strike number four altogether. Again, in the, the spirit of giving staff more discretion in how we assign addresses, it may be that we end up with this being a half address being the more, most appropriate address for a certain location. But we don't want the restriction of being told we shall address this if it really doesn't make sense in the context of a case like this. The four allows to change or react, reassign addresses to current buildings. So in that example of East Main Street, if there's no other option address infill lots as they develop, then to give them a higher address than that in the building. If this change is approved, it would give us the ability to reassign a new address to that, that existing building. So maybe instead of 531, it becomes 591, which therefore allows us to address more buildings in that same block as they build. And then numbers five through seven are proposed as new language altogether. Number five deals with accessory dwelling units or accessory structures, and this is specifically a request from JP Fire. As they've been going through and reviewing our current addresses, there's been a lot of confusion around how we've been assigning addresses to ADUs based on our current code. Some of them get a number, some of them get a letter. JP Fire would really like a consistent way that ADUs are addressed so that they know exactly where they're going when they're responding to any type of rumors. Number six looks at defining for commercial that units would be addressed 10 numbers apart. And specifically for commercial buildings because they, they might have the ability to create more units in the future. So maybe today, there's five units that are each 500 square feet in the commercial building. If they're addressed two numbers apart, in the future, somebody wants to create 10, 250 square foot units, we would have a really hard time assigning addresses to each of those. But if we're requiring that those units are addressed 10 numbers apart, now, if they break apart in the future, we have space to create new addresses when those new units are created. And then finally, number seven, it's really kind of codifying what is a very common practice, which is that for multi-story buildings, the first floor would have addresses with numbers starting with one, 100, 101, et cetera. Second floors would start with two, third floor with three. So it's really codifying that so that we're getting again, from a fire perspective or first responder perspective, if they're responding to an address at, you know, building X, number, unit number 201, they know that's second floor. So it's trying to create a little bit more consistency, but also in some, a little bit more discretion for staff in assigning addresses. So that's a pretty high level overview, but more than happy to take questions, concerns.
Trustees.
I have a comment on, within the ordinance, section one, item number one. It sounds like you're saying that you're going to increase the numbers by one for each subsequent property in a block. And I'm sure that's not what you mean. And it says then by regularly increasing one number.
So that's referring to the, the blocks away from Main Street in this example. So that the first block away from Main Street would be 100 block, and then the next block has to be the 200 block.
Right. Yeah, yeah. So, so it'd be like the 000 block and then the 100 block and 200 block. If it's going to be like Denver. If it's going to be like Denver, let's say.
Sure.
But then within a block, you're not talking about using one through twenty-five, and then you've reached the end of the block. It would be more like, I would assume that one house might be number five, number one oh five. Another one might be number one eighteen. Well, that'd be on the other side of the street, but say one seventeen. And you'd you'd go down the block because otherwise, when when you get something that fits between two of them, you're going to have to renumber the whole street. And and I think this is apt to be irritating to people because they take sort of ownership of the number, but I went into the rabbit hole of researching this. And it's been pretty clearly defined that you don't own your house number. Another thing I'm wondering about is whether in the Inavista, whether we have any streets that should be renamed if you're going into this whole process.
Well, next item on the agenda.
To be to be clear, we're not proposing with this ordinance to change any current addresses nor to change any current streets. We're we're allowing for a more refined formula for future addressing. So I I don't want to say that we're opening up street names by by this ordinance. It's only looking at numbering systems.
If I may, so shortly after I arrived here on twenty fifteen, there were some instances that we had to deal with, and I know there was some efforts previously to my arrival in twenty fifteen where we tried to get rid of the half addresses. Okay, so.
Don't say that too fast.
Computer systems don't like half addresses. And nine one one has computers and Domino's has computers and Amazon has computers. And as a person who is give packages to a half address and they get returned because they can't recognize the address, that's a hard bit. And there was an instance where staff had to make a decision because we had two properties that had the same address. That is a real problem. If there's an emergency and someone's lying on the floor needing medical assistance and the ambulance shows up and kicks in the wrong door to try and save some. So that actually occurred and we had to change one of those addresses. And both property owners were very vested in their address. But from a health safety perspective, if they weren't trying to figure out between the two of them, I was going to change both of their addresses so that we can make sure not only pizzas get delivered, but emergency responders can find the right address.
Yeah, no, it's very important.
Yes, so that being said, there is a long and varied history to addresses in this town because there were half addresses. There were addresses that the numbers are on the wrong side of the street. And there are addresses, the end of the block is, for example, five thirty-one, but we have the need for more addresses. And I understand that, you know, things like the phone book, if they still exist, and people's businesses and their addresses are very important. And so it's not staff's intent to do this really nearly. And yes, we do have streets that you do need name changes because the assessor's office shows a variety of names. Great Drive would be an example. If you go west of Rodeo Road, it says Rodeo Road. So there are things that, yes, we need to correct, but we need to have the ability to have the ordinance give us the ability to change them.
Other comments? Motion?
Make motion to approve resolution.
Ordinance.
Ordinance number two.
Thank you.
Second.
Second Swisher, further discussion?
I know we've had this discussion before, Mark. Mine's five forty-five and a half. UPS does not know.
Not anymore.
Her new computer system does not work that. It it can't comprehend that.
I had parts returned a week ago, tried to deliver them there.
At least we don't have to worry about mail delivery.
No, I do, if that's right.
How is the NIVOP was involved?
Both, thank you all very much. Next item is.
Thank you, Mark.
Rehab of the airport aprons, resolution number seven, series twenty twenty-two, resolution of the Board of Trustees for Town of Inavista, Colorado, approving the agreement for the professional services provided by Dibble Engineering for twenty twenty-two Apron Rehabilitation Design Phase. Jack, you're still with us?
Yes, sir, I am. Thank you for.
I'm sorry.
Entertaining me again, Board Trustees. So I I sort of introduced this resolution with a bit of a letter. I hope it didn't confuse the issue a little more, but I'll try and summarize this really quickly. In last four years, we've been giving our our monies over to other airports. So we are now in the queue to receive funding from FAA for twenty twenty-two to us, and then we are first in the queue for twenty twenty-three. So what what is happening here? We're we're entitled to six hundred thousand in both years. But after meetings with the FAA and CDOT and our engineers, we're going to use just a small portion of it in twenty twenty-two to do the design and to set the project up for in twenty twenty-three. So the design phase, which we're asking for the resolution tonight, will be for a hundred and forty-three thousand and change for just the design phase. And then the rest of the funding will be used in twenty twenty-three and for 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 the actual construction of rebuilding the aprons and et cetera. Part of the reason we want to go this way is that I don't have to shut the airport down two years in a row. Also, there's there's a fair amount of work that has to be done to figure out just the impact on the apron, how much materials we're going to need. And we're looking at extending, you know, doing some of this project and and moving fence lines. So you'll see in the letter, Dibble is saying a hundred and forty-three thousand. Plus, we have a little bit of money for five thousand for administration fees. That includes like if we have to advertise for subcontractors. We have part of the stipulation with the FAA, we had to, Dibble puts out a contract, we have to have an independent fee study. That was three thousand dollars. But that's included in our funding. So part of the, if we go back a little bit, in our budget, in ClearGov and whatever, we have funded for this project and we have extra monies for it. So the bottom line is it's, Dibble has put out a hundred, a hundred and forty-three, almost a hundred and forty-four thousand for twenty twenty-two. And then we'll we'll extend the projects in twenty-three. I can certainly add, and if you go into scope of work, it'll show some of the costs and everything, well, all the costs. I can entertain any questions that you might have for this. But I hope the letter try to explain some of this, and if you got any questions, certainly ask. I I can certainly entertain.
No, and I appreciate the introduction, Jack, because not everybody here is familiar with the the FAA, the way that's worked for us in the past and the way it works in the future. So that's been, that was real nice to lead into that. From what I'm seeing here, our actual out-of-pocket for this first twenty twenty-two is five percent.
Correct, so FAA, all all the FAA projects are ninety percent funded by FAA. And then the ten percent that's left over is split between local, i.e. the Town of Inavista, and the state, i.e. CDOT. For, I think it's around seventy-four hundred dollars and change.
Yep, yep, perfect. Questions for Jack? Yes, Libby.
On page one thirty-four, Jack. It says that the town has budgeted a hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine sixty-two. Why is it that number rather than a hundred and forty-eight nine seventy-two?
Right, so in ClearGov, and I put the number one fifty-seven because that's what we have in ClearGov. This was budgeted prior, like when we started planning this out back in, I guess, September. So the scope of work, when Dibble actually came out with their numbers, just in, say, November timeframe, ended up a hundred and forty-three thousand. But all that to say that we put in the budget because it was an estimate of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
Okay, thank you.
We have more than enough money for the twenty twenty-two in Dibble. Not to say we're going to need it, use it, but we have budgeted. That's why, so the one fifty-seven is the number that you will see in ClearGov. Once the project's complete, it'll be one thirty-four and and then plus with our other monies. That's why the difference.
And basically, that's just how he stated it. It's budgeted at one fifty-seven.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I would entertain a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number seven.
Thank you. Second vote, please, further discussion? We'll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Let's be Swisher.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all very much, and thank you, Jack. We're moving along, right?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, trustees.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Board of Trustee compensation. The board will review and discuss process for amending compensation amounts for the mayor and trustees. Keeping in mind, you can't vote yourself a raise. I just thought I'd throw that in there. Beans, everybody's returning. Except for, well.
You and me.
Well, and actually, no. Libby'd be moving up, so she didn't vote herself a raise, did she?
No, she did not. Well, you all haven't approved anything.
I know, man, but I'm just saying, if if it were to happen.
It's a new term.
It's a new term, yeah, okay. So anyway, Dave, you brought this up. Discuss it.
I think I, my idea was that, well, first of all, we have the the notes to compare what other other municipalities are doing. I personally am fond of the idea of a stipend, monthly stipend, and then meeting bonuses. You know, two hundred and fifty dollars for trustee, whatever, a hundred dollars for a town meeting, and then twenty-five or fifty dollars for each, like advisory board meeting or something else, but that's that's just my rough framework, so.
Your your reasoning behind it?
Reasoning behind it is to encourage additional participation in advisory boards and other CML meetings or other 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 governmental approved meetings.
Trustees, comments?
Accounting nightmare. As okay, I'm on the tree board and the water board, and it doesn't make any difference whether I attend or not money-wise to to me. But I attend because I am interested in the tree board and the water board, and I accept to do that. And that is just part of my regular job as a trustee. I don't need added incentive to attend.
I'm not married to the idea at all. I'm not going to be here.
I think just a pay vote would probably be good, even though I wouldn't get any of it, but.
I mean, and I looked, and and basically, I just looked at the numbers that were there. I I don't think were undercompensated or overcompensated. I I looked at some of the others and I go, gosh, I I think we're okay. I mean, obviously, there's some they're doing more or less like Dave suggested, so much meeting, things like that. But when I see the burden, the burden is responsibility. What do you want to make it? And I remember that being said many years ago, it's what you make it. What do you, what are you here for? I can, and I do recall several several meetings where somebody did not even read the packet. It's what you make it. It don't matter whether you get a dime for it or not. It's what you make it. What are you here for? Represent town, represent citizens, do what's best for town. I mean, I I think that's the way I look at it. Compensation, yeah, I mean, it can be adjusted. I'm not saying it can't be. I think we're fair. I think we're fair. I don't think we're undercompensated. And then I think, wait a minute, Parker's got sixty-one thousand, Jesus, very many. And then you go to Frederick with fourteen thousand, and we're actually getting paid more than them. Interesting, and I can remember, I can't remember his name, Al Al Blum. Cherry Creek, they don't get paid anything. And you go, oh. Now, them guys are making some decisions, you would think. I mean, you know, maybe it's all bailed out and they don't have to. I don't know, maybe they just show up. It's just, it is what it is, and it's whatever you guys think. More thoughts, Gina?
I mean, I.
You're new, you don't know. Cindy, nevermind, what do you think?
I mean, it's appropriate to have something because I think, I think if you were like, oh, let's do ways that are like, make it so low that it's, I mean, of course, you're here because you love it, but knowing that you are receiving something, I hope would, if if you're running out time to do, I don't, you know, when you're seeing people, then we read packet, that's horrible. I mean, there's, I don't have time to do this or that, or maybe it just, I would hope that that would force somebody to remember like, hey, this is also a paid thing as well, and you better do well with the money that you're receiving for it. And so, so, I mean, yeah, we're, the scale's kind of all over the place. Obviously, we're.
It really is. It really is.
But, I mean, we are close to Salida. I get it. They have more than us. We're growing and we're tackling some pretty darn big things and sales taxes up and everything else, and I don't know. I I don't see why it couldn't be raised, but at the same time, if it doesn't, it's not the end of the world, so.
Well, I think the incoming board and mayor should, it should be increased a little bit. I would, I would say a hundred each way, but that's my opinion.
Evan?
Yeah, I think that's, I agree with with Norm, I think, hundred each way, sounds good.
Libby?
Yeah, I agree too.
So entertain a motion?
I'm not going to be, I'll make.
I'll make a motion to approve increasing the the fee, of the fee, the rate of pay to three fifty per month per trustee and four fifty per mayor.
Okay, Patrick, second, Nyberg, further discussion? We'll call, please.
Yes.
Let's see the crazy.
Yes.
Let's see, never.
Yes.
Let's do, Rob.
Yes.
Let's do Swisher.
Yes.
Just a vote, please.
Okay, thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda, item F, twenty twenty-one, final budget adjustments. Resolution number eight, series twenty twenty-two, a resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Inavista, Colorado, adopting the final adjusted and supplemental budget for the Town of Inavista, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning the first day of January twenty twenty-one and ending the last day of December twenty twenty-one. To the Board of Trustees also, this is another resolution, number nine, series twenty twenty-two, entitled a resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Inavista, Colorado, adopting a final supplemental appropriations for the Town of Inavista, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January twenty twenty-one and ending on the last day of December twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. These will be two separate votes. Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And so this is the final adjustment on the twenty twenty-one budget, and that is basically made to true up all the stuff that you've been voting on all the second. that you've been voting on all the second half of the year. And so the bullet points here under the analysis are the different things that, um, that were approved during the year, um, including the ADA ramp for the St. Rose of Lima Chapel. I drove by it the other day, it's looking pretty awesome. Um, we changed the transfer from the Conservation Trust Fund and put Odyssey of the Mind on its own, um, budget line. We allocated our, our funds for carbonate street planning and funds to begin work on the acquisition of the Police Department payroll budget to account for the twenty-seventh bi-weekly payroll. And we reduced expenses for the streetlight replacement program because a lot more of it turned out to be grant-funded than what we had expected, which is always good news. So, um, in the attachments, beginning on, page, looks like page one eighty-one, one eighty-two in the packet. Um, the first attachment is, uh, the resolution for the adoption of the adjusted budget, and the second attachment is the appropriation. Then the appendixes or the attachment A, the budget adjustment register just shows where the funds are going or where they're coming from or both. And then B, attachment B, which is on page, oh, help me out, Philip.
One ninety-four.
Oh, thank you very much, is the, I looked at my own copy because Philip doesn't move it the way my brain works, so I looked at my own copy. Um, so then B is the format that you're used to looking at the budget in. And the original budget, the one we did in June, and then this final budget adjustment, so the total final budget is on the far right. And, um, the mid-year adjustments, adjustment numbers are, are still there from the mid-year adjustment, but the final adjustment are bolded, so you can match those adjustment numbers back to the adjustment register and get the explanation as to what it was all for. So, um, that's it in a nutshell, but I will take questions if there are any.
Questions for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle. Um, I would entertain a motion first on resolution number eight for the adopting the final adjusted supplemental budget.
I like that motion.
Thank you.
Wake up.
Second.
Second Swisher, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Next, I would entertain a motion for resolution number nine, the appropriate, the supplemental appropriations.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number nine, resolution number nine, whatever it was.
Second, Fay, further discussion? And that is resolution number nine.
Resolution.
Thank you. Um, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all very much, and thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Now you're already adjusting my twenty twenty-two budget.
Yes, we are. Okay, trustee staff interaction, Mark.
Nothing. Thank you for putting up with me for two hours.
You're welcome. Joseph?
Um, nothing, um, the, you're, you're all full.
Um, first off, I do want to say thank you to you guys for, for putting all together a ton of stuff, and it couldn't have been easy to do so. Thank you for listening. Um, the other thing, uh, this is a little random, um, but I've been working with, uh, the BLM and the, um, Division of Reclamation, Mining and Safety, kind of, uh, work towards getting some of the mines closed up and around the recreational area for Barble Whipple. Um, been finding more and more open mine holes, and it's a huge recreational area, tons of camping on three oh four. Um, so, kind of like a side project, but, so, there's more open up there than you'd ever imagined in a place gets. So busy in the summertime, and so, I don't know. I know we can't fill all the mine holes in Colorado, it would be impossible, but since we have such high recreation traffic there, um, just trying to, I don't know, take care of some of that, but, fine, side project.
Thank you. Dave?
Uh, the only thing that I've got is way back in the administrator's report, when you guys are talking about swapping with the school or land, the school interested in some of our properties, it just run a bell, I don't know, um, the, the lot that we rent out for parking in the summer from them, they were trying to sell that, so I don't, and it should have, maybe it has been already thought about, but it's.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Hey, that it, Dave? Jeff, do you have any more for us?
He's muted.
I had to find the right button there. Nope, I don't have anything more for you. I'll just join in tonight for the executive session, so no worries. Oh, there you go. Michelle?
I'm good, thank you very much.
That's nothing.
Nothing? Uh, Sean still with us?
Yes, I am. Um, I am good, though. Good night.
I saw where Shane and Grant were both on there at one point in time. They both talked?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Um, Joel?
Yep. Um, two quick things. One, the decorative lights should all be up and working, but if you guys are driving around and see one that is not, because some of the bulbs have gone out, just let me know. Two, um, uh, update on the Baylor DePaul Highway twenty-four traffic light. So, just so you guys know, that's poking along, we had, we are, town had to be removed from, uh, kind of this active coordinator role of that, thankfully. Because CDOT is taking that, all we're doing is supplying money and some opinion on the design. And so they had to re, redo the paperwork with a new CDOT internal number. So, that, uh, paperwork is being done and executed out, and, um, anyway, just so you guys know, that it's all been approved and, and still moving forward, but just.
And I saw where there was a chunk of change dedicated to transportation, CDOT, um, state, state level, so who knows?
Well, we've got plenty of this one covered, and then, uh, we're in what, the five or ten-year plan for that timeframe for the steel.
Steel, okay.
Anyway, those are my two points. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joel. Devin?
Oh, um, I'd be interested in that cog thing, if, unless someone else is really into it. I'll talk to Philip after. Volunteering for.
Thank you. Get you more information.
Yeah, cool. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Well, a few years have gone by. Is there a way that we can start the process to try to get that lot on North Colorado cleaned up?
I'm sorry, the lot on North Colorado?
North Colorado?
Yeah.
Is there a, I know a number of years have gone by. Is there a chance that we could contact the family and?
They actually moved and cleared, I mean, there was movement on that lot a year ago, a year and a half ago. Quite a bit was taken off of it.
There's still quite a bit on there.
Still stuff there, but.
And with all the, the new building going on in that section of town, kind of an eyesore, eyesore still.
What reason?
Um, you're talking the southeast corner of Colorado and Arkansas?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, if I remember correctly, we were s- still waiting for a sheriff in Montana to make an official decision, if the person was actually officially deceased or not. So, there was, there's a whole long history. Sorry, I don't remember it all.
Yeah, Grant, Grant has actually made progress with the brother on that.
I, I know that, uh, what is it, to be declared legally dead at seven years? So, there's been a number of years go by, and it, I'm just looking at it from the, the new development that's going on, and the possible development, and to clean up an eyesore.
Hey, good. Cindy?
Um, I would like to keep up on the Ivy League water. Um, it has been, went on ever since I was a, when I first came on the board, and I'm sure it was happening before that. And with the new meter, I would like to have it have, and as important as water is, it's got to end somewhere. And just kind of make sure we keep track of that figure and we pursue it somehow after we know how much is missed.
Paula? I don't believe it.
A letter of support in the packet for Solvista's grant application, supporting their co-response program and some other things. You sent me all an email with further information, but the draft letter is in your packet for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve signing the letter.
Second that.
We have the motion in a second. Further discussion? Um, you know, I didn't, uh, the highlighted yellow, did, was something put in there, Paula?
I have drafted that. Paula has to.
Well, I was gonna say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Opposed? Thank you very much, I've already signed it. Just saying that. I, I forgot about that highlighted spot, and I went, oh no, man, what did I sign?
Want me here? Yeah. You want me here? Yeah.
Strategic negotiations, telling secrets.
Instructions.
Okay, um, one thing that I had, and then, Paula, I don't know how we do this, CML, I get notices as a mayor from CML. And I've sent them out before, and I know David's responded and saying, cool, man, that's, you know, that's a great deal. Don't the trustees get those?
They should be getting them. I can follow up with CDOT and verify that, that they have, I know they have everybody's contact information.
I just want to make sure that they do, and I think that goes hand in hand with what you're saying, Dave, because there's opportunities out there to do webinars and stuff like that, and, and I don't know whether you've missed them, and I've.
Looked at a couple. And if you're digging for information, you can find it, they're just not super polished. It was just, most of them weren't, the, the ones I checked out anyway, were, were Zoom meetings that they recorded.
Well, and, and there's, uh, a great number of them don't pertain to you. But then there's also, wow, that's, maybe I want to tune into that or listen to it or something like that. And I know that's been discussed before, that we could have a, let's say, a work session or a pizza party, whatever, watch them on the big screen, you know, if it's webinar-type thing or something like that. So keep that in mind, if you see something of interest, bring that up and. If you have anything else to.
That's it.
Cindy?
Quick question. Trustees, do they still have to do the NIMs training? Even though the chap, he does fire does that.
We're gonna get back into that mode, it'll be a little more abbreviated, I'll say.
But if you've already taken it, you don't have to do it again, okay?
Taking so many of those tests? You do, huh? Maybe, no, Joel didn't take any of them. I was the only one that got hoodwinked into that, okay. I guess that's it. Next item on the agenda is an exec, excuse me. Did I call on you? Oh, I didn't. Didn't write your name down. You're not here.
For continuing on the board, Paula for running a, a very efficient and pleasant, um, petition gathering, petition processing, and Cindy, and and enough for staying on the board, and, uh, now we're gonna have Mark Jenkins back and, and Sue Cobb, who will be really good too, and, um, so I'm just real optimistic about our, our board going forward.
And no, there, you better be careful, there's a raise coming up, and you've got until the first.
You guys better be working a hundred dollars more than I am.
And so if nothing happens by then, we.
Next meeting.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Joel, you too.
Thank you. Okay, now I can move forward. Uh, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session, and executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations, and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS. Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, subparagraph, or paragraph four, subparagraph E, concerning the franchise agreement with Sandy Crystal Electric Association, and also at an executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations and/or instruct negotiations, negotiators pursuant to CRS, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, paragraph four, subparagraph E, concerning the potential acquisition of water rights.
Some move.
I think Dave beat you. Got a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Thank you all. We will resume in exa- executive session. Uh, who's staying?
Uh, Joel, Joseph, and myself, and Jeff. That's it? Yeah.